We are now back on the record. We will start with item 10.
Item 10, Department of Committee Reports, Non-Action Items. 10A, 2018 Budget Hearing Number Four, Original Adopted Budget. Department Office Critical Needs Presentation. Sherri Cassidy, County Controller, Administration and Financial Services.
Good morning, Commissioners. Nicholas App, Deputy County Administrator. We have the remainder of your presentations for today, and so we're hoping we'll just get through those as expeditiously as we have the last two budget hearing dates. We have the Honorable Treasurer, Mark Louderman, who is going to kick it off for you this morning, and then we'll go through there. And then depending on how we are in schedule, we may, if there's some afternoon ones we can get to ahead of time, we'll do that again. But, and then we'll wrap up with our financial roadmap.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I see you have a long budget day, and I'm going to try and not take up too much of it. For the new guys, just to make you aware, I'd rather come up and just visit with you than do a PowerPoint. I understand the finance guys have prepared one, so if they want to flip through it, that's fine.[82.11][82.11](Laughter). They're in charge, Sherri, thank you. Just a quick overview, and you probably know, the Treasurer's Office is a constitutional office set up by the state when Colorado became a state, just like the Assessor's Office and others. There are states that have a tax collector or a tax assessor, where the same guy assesses and collects. And Colorado thought they had a better idea, and I agree with them, that you probably need to separate those two functions. So my office, the Treasurer's Office, collects property taxes and distributes them between what has grown into about 250 taxing entities. Your treasurer is also your investment banker, and that is a scary thought right there.[137.72][137.72](Laughter). We take the money that goes through the Treasurer's Office, which is about a half a billion dollars a year, and we capture investment dollars on that. It isn't a great amount. I think last year it was something around $300,000. And the reason for that is because we're bound statutorily on what we can invest in. Basically, it's very safe, very short-term. Short-term meaning for us, a long-term commitment would be 30 days, because the money that comes in is earmarked and has to go right back out. So in a nutshell, that's what we do. I have a staff of 15 people. There were 18 when I took over, but we've managed to cut that down a little bit, like I did with the Assessor's Office. But the good news is, the Treasurer's budget is good. I know you've been made aware of the salary study that's been done, and there's been a conscious effort over the last few years to get people, employees, first to the minimum of the range that was indicated for the various positions, and then now hopefully move people on to the midpoint. Well, luckily, all of my people are at or above the midpoint. It wasn't that way when I took office. It's been almost three years ago now. The budget at that office was conservatively a train wreck. But with the help of my staff and the people with finance and you guys, we've been able to right the ship, and we're in good shape budget-wise. So the only thing that I'd like to talk to you about today is looking at what, and I've, as we've gone through the budget meetings with the other elected folks, is we've experienced in the past, and I've been around a long time. I've been here 25 years, about half of that is an elected guy. But when I first took office in the Assessor's Office, we were just starting our downturn where the bottom fell out money-wise. And the result of that was a number of things that the county and the board are responsible for had some deferred maintenance. Roads are foremost. A number of our buildings had deferred maintenance. That ship has also been righted, and we're on the right course. But probably what I think is the county's greatest asset, its employees, they've also suffered some deferred maintenance. During the budget conversations, starting a couple of years ago, we adopted what's been called the roadmap or the five-year plan, or whatever you want to call it. But in there, there are some items that if we all uniformly stick to them, we can address the deferred maintenance for a number of those items, if not all of them, including the employees. So like I say, I'm fortunate through attrition and using some salary savings to adjust my folks' compensation. We're good with regard to the Mountain State Salary Study. But it won't stay that way if we don't collectively make a commitment for some ongoing salary concerns with those employees. I know you've heard that it's tough to recruit new people. Luckily, I've got a fairly stable staff right now. It has stabilized, and the folks that I have in there have got there, have been there a long time. They know how the operation works and things go very smoothly. But when you have an office of 15 people, you know, all it takes is a couple of folks, especially your senior folks, to find a better offer elsewhere, and that can certainly throw a wrench in the day-to-day operations. So knock on wood, we're going along fine. But again, my main emphasis today is to encourage you to address the deferred maintenance that's been a concern for our employees. So, thank you. Now, be glad to answer any questions, anybody.
Questions? Great.
You guys are too easy, thanks.
Hey.
Have a good day, thanks.
Thank you. He did that to keep us on schedule.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jim Reid, Executive Director, Department of Public Works. Commissioner Gonzalez, thank you. You gave me a three-hour time limit, so I will try to stay within that time limit, if you don't mind, as soon as I get the slide presentation up.
You go three hours, your budget's up.[467.62][467.62](Laughter).
Okay, are there any questions? All right, so you know that already. This is our organizational chart at this point. As you know, security is under review, so that may stay or change, depending on what the outcome of that is. I just want you to know it's approximately 320 employees that are in the Department of Public Works. I will go with security first. I'm not going to read the slides to you, but these are the things they're responsible for. The one thing I do want to point out in this particular slide is the risk assessment and mitigation. This year, we were actually able to complete a risk assessment on all the facilities within the county. And you've seen some of the changes in your own facility where Janet Webb and all them sit. That's some of the changes that are a result of that assessment and mitigation. Here's our operating indicators. I think this is important. This is how many people go through that courthouse during the week, or during the year, rather. And this is quite the tasking. They screen all of these. This year, I think we found two guns. When they say weapons, people come in with, what's the tool they use to clean the hooves off of a horse? I mean knives. You'd be surprised at some of the stuff that they catch. So they do a very good job at doing that. And just so you know, with all the officers, you're talking county, just county space alone, it's almost 3.1 million square feet that they secure. Here are some of the things that with your support, with the help of budget and finance, we're working on locks and access control systems. One of the concerns that we had with that is we have multiple lock systems, which makes it difficult and costly when it comes to having to repair or replace keys. Ballistic vests and additional officers. We've been fortunate enough to get some additional officers. The locks were funded out of facilities, and that project has started this year. We've taken two small buildings acres in this facility so we can work out the bugs on the locking system before we go to CSC in some of the larger facilities. And your bulletproof vests are on a five-year lifecycle, so that's a continual. Here's the budget on that. Okay. Fleet management, almost 1,200 vehicles, $46 million, all the way from road graders to tampers to lawn mowers. They do it all. They support 22 departments and elected offices. Here's the strategic plan that they're working on. It's Goal Three Strategy A, actually, Objective Five and Eleven. I want to talk about telematics real quickly so that you understand some of the things that that does. We've had this, I know we brought this before the board, before we invested in it. This is the system that tracks where the vehicles are at, what they're doing, also the status of the engines. So if we throw a code out there in the field, the mechanics get the code, they can say, "Keep working," or "Stop the machine," we'll come out there and fix it right away. So it's a huge benefit and a huge efficiency that's been implemented on these vehicles. You know about the color change? As Dave Rhodes says, it's an ugly green. But I'll be honest with you, as ugly as it may be, people see it. Last winter, when we started out last winter, we got hit three times. I didn't see the trucks. Now, they can't help but see it. So I think that's a big deal. We're working on the brine to reduce icy conditions. That system is in. It won't be operational until next winter, though. There's quite a bit that has to go along with that and some learning. Our smaller vehicles, we bought smaller vehicles for cul-de-sacs. I know we've talked about that. And we're trying to standardize our equipment for training, operations, and maintenance. Here's our operating indicators. Right now, our goal is 94% to 90% uptime. When we first started this, we were in the 70s and 80s, and they worked on that. And there's some reasons why that has happened. The one thing I do want to say is that we least thank you for your support, Commissioners, on the leasing program. I really appreciate that. We're talking eight graders, four brooms, three trucks, three farm tractors, one loader, a snow blower. And that's going to make a big difference in our ability to do our job and support the citizens. Fleet management, on this particular one, as you know, we are now, we're doing preventive maintenance on these vehicles. We're painting them, we're taking care of the rust. We're doing that all in-house to lower the downtime and lower the cost, keep it under cost. On our snow removal, we're adding road temperature sensors and backup cameras. The trucks don't traditionally come with those, and so we're adding those. The sensors are important. They need to tell us what the road temperature is. So if we do decide to treatment, do decide to do the anti-icing treatment, we understand, because there's a line in there that we, if it's, I think it's below 15 degrees, we can't put it on there. But if it's above 15 degrees, it's more effective. So that's going to be a big help to us. 5,000 work orders, I think that's huge. 850 preventive maintenance services. Here's the base budget. One thing, I don't want to skip over too quickly, but if you notice that we, in this particular one, I think we've talked about it, where we've put seven days a week maintenance. And the importance of that is, is when the trucks aren't needed, they're in the shop getting their services so that come Monday, when they come in, they're ready to go. And that has been a huge benefit to us. Emergency management, I think we're, most of us here are familiar with emergency management, have some experience with it. This is what they're responsible for. We're still in long-term recovery. I think we've got about four projects left, and we'll be done with both Black Forest and Waldo Canyon fires. So, and how many years is that? Five, six years now? Here's their strategic planning. I know Commissioner Littleton has been very active. Thank you, Commissioner, for that. We appreciate your attending the L.A.P.C. and other things, that's important. And we, I won't reiterate, but again, we had the hazmat briefing last time that told you about the Tier Two inspections and stuff like that. Any questions on this? Okay. Here's their budget. Okay. There's their mission statement. This has quite a few numbers on it, but it just gives you the depth and breadth of what facilities were responsible for. I want to talk about the operations down below. I think you've seen these numbers time and time again. Our property managers is something that we're working on. Budgeting and finance has been very good about helping us with that, and I think we're going to fix that situation. But, you know, the janitorial service contract is coming up, so that's a big time. It's going to take a lot of time. We need to do a little bit better job on that with the contractor. The county mailroom, you get your mail, you never see those two people, do you? But they get all the mail and they get it distributed. So there's a lot of folks that are behind the scenes that you don't see, and I think we need to recognize them at this point. Just so, for your information, we had over 16,000 preventive maintenance work orders in the past 12 months and 8,794 repair work orders in the last 12 months. Elevators, unfortunately, the poor sheriff had to deal with our first set of replacement elevators. That was quite the learning curve for everybody. It was a lot of work. With your support, we were able to fund those and get those fixed. Swatch Garage, just like our professional garage or pro building garage, I don't think all of you were here except for the President and Commissioner Littleton. We're going to do a review of that garage. We want to get ahead of it versus coming to you and saying, "Hey, we're at critical mass and we need to do it now." So Mr. Daniels has gotten ahead of that, and we're going to work on that. And the DDC controls are what controls the temperature. So if you call and say, "I'm cold," those controls will raise and lower the temperature, and we need to upgrade those, because I think they're working off of Office XP. And then our ADA, we've done some phenomenal things with ADA this year. I think you've been briefed throughout the year. Our latest one is that we found a hearing loop system that looks like actual a poster that they plug in in the counters. And so we've talked to folks that provide services to citizens, and we'll start buying those and give those to them so they actually sit on the desk itself where they work and plug in. They say, "Look, we're hearing incompatible. All they have to do is switch the Bluetooth and they're set." So I think the county is way ahead of any county in this state when it comes to ADA requirements. Here's our major maintenance. And I will thank this board again for the dedicated funding to ADA. That is a big deal, and it is a huge help. So thank you for that. Any questions on this at all, at this point?
Just so you know, we're holding questions to the end.
Oh, you're testing me?
Yes.
That's why I'm getting the deer-in-the-headlight look, okay.[1037.25][1037.25](Laughter). So I better, so I better end. Is that what I better do?
Yeah.
Okay. We go onto transportation engineering. This is what we do. It's quite the task. You've seen these numbers time and time again, so I won't go over them. These are the many requirements. Just so you know, we do have an employee who is active with legislation and also use of the Ferguson Group. Thanks to Mr. Yankowski, they've been a big help. So we are extremely active, watching what's going on, and we stay in touch with those folks. Here's our goals and strategies. Here are our operating indicators. These are major capital projects in 2017. The two bridges are, I think they're complete, Jim? Is that right? Or the one is anyway? Yeah, they're both complete. So they were built in 1930. Evidently, they were built properly because they lasted quite a long time. If you look at the customer service requests, and I will tell you that most of those are gravel. Here's our capital projects. Keep in mind, we could have, we could do an all-day deal on all the projects that we have. So this does not include the PPRTA projects, parks projects, or the federally funded projects. These are just ones that we're funding, so. Now, having said that, I do want to make this statement. I want to thank the voters for allowing us the money to get a jumpstart on some of the roads. I mean, I really appreciate their trust and confidence in us. It's a huge step for us to get forward and get things moving. So again, I'd like to say that publicly. Thanks to the voters, we're able to get some of these jump-started, so. Okay? So let's talk about wins. Our light bars and safety colors make the vehicles more visible, and that's extremely important. Our signal upgrades, let's talk about signals. Right now, currently, they're done manually. If you call in and say, "This signal is not working," we send a person out there, they watch the signal, and then they go in and manually adjust the signal to get it fixed, okay? What they're doing is they're going to a radio upgrade where they can log on and fix it from where they're at versus having to drive out there and sit. So this is the first upgrade. Eventually, we hope, at some point in time, we get fiber out in the county, because most traffic lights are controlled by fiber. We're not there yet, but we're taking the next step to improve our efficiency when it comes to managing traffic lights within the county. Our salt purchases are done during the summer. We don't buy them during the winter when the cost is high and the demand is high. We buy them during the summer when no one wants it. And that has saved us some money. Our wide crack machine, I'll give Transportation a lot of kudos on this. They tested a lot of material, a lot of machines on wide cracks. They're special. They have to be done during the cold weather when the cracks are the whitest, because when they're warm, they tend to expand in. So finding the right mastic and the right combination to make that successful has been difficult, but they found one, and they're out doing that. And with your support, we were able to hire seven part-time employees during those months, seasonals, to go out and start doing wide crack sealing. So that's been a big help. Our internal bridge deck replacement, you're familiar with that. We created a team. We're doing it between one-third and one-quarter of the actual cost if we were to contract out those bridge deck replacements. So we've garnered an efficiency there. And we've also done a safety and training program. We're going out and we're training these folks to have the most efficient employees that we can when we put them out to, put them out to the field. The one thing I do want to tell you about the employees, which I think is important, is that over the last four years, we've averaged almost a 20% turnover rate. And if you look at it over five years, it's a 100% turnover rate in the lower, the maintenance worker, one and two positions. And so for us, that creates inefficiencies for us because we're constantly training to get people proficient at what they need to do, and it all comes down to their compensation. And that's what's really hurting us, is once we train them, we like to keep them, but they can just drive up to Douglas County and garner significant pay increase. And that's made it difficult for us. So our, and I'll talk later on about that a little bit more. But our safety and training program was garnered from the ground up, not from top-down, and it's been very successful so far. We have an urban wildland interface team now that if there's a fire out east, they are trained to take the blades and cut line, which we hope will decrease the amount of land that's burnt. They have their PPE, and we've invested in those folks to do that. And I will tell you, at an Ellicott public meeting, people were pretty loud and boisterous about their roads. But when it came to the wildland team, they were extremely emotional and extremely grateful that we put that team together, because they know that El Paso County is out there to protect them. We've consolidated road and park projects management together. They're pretty much the same, so that's created some efficiencies. The relationship with parks, I think, is phenomenal with DPW, and we're doing some good things there. We've talked about fleet telematics a little bit. I hope in a year or so, we have enough information where we can start looking for road efficiencies and route efficiencies, and so that was a big deal. And the anti-icing technologies, again, that should start hopefully next winter. And what we hope to do is prevent the ice from sticking on the roads before a storm. We want to be ahead of it versus trying to knock it off after it's already there. Okay, these are opportunities. One of the things, and preventive maintenance on vehicle and rust, corrosion, so forth and so on, we have to wash the vehicles. Right now, we have an inefficient method of doing it. We pull one truck in, we give them a hot seat, and they basically scrub the truck down. Well, that takes some time. These trucks are not like your vehicle or my vehicle. It takes them two hours sometimes just to get them properly cleaned. So you can imagine all the trucks out on the road two hours at a time. We hope to invest in the future, a wash machine for heavy trucks so they can drive through and be done within 10, 15 minutes. And that'll help us with the corrosion on the bodies along with our corrosion control program that we're working on. And in the gravel road reclamation, we've talked about it. I think that's something that we're going to continue to put together, to bring forward to you, to show the efficiencies on that. This is Slide 31. What that does for us, if done properly, we can combine two processes, regraveling and dust mitigation at the same time. So we have to sit down and get that program together, and we'll come forward and present that to you and tell you where we're at. But we've tested five or six machines recently to see how they work, and the crews will come to me with a proposal and say, "This is the machine we like, and this is what works for us." These are challenges for us. If you look, in 2000, 41% of the paved roads in El Paso County were categorized as failing. That's now up to 53%. And we were only, on average, we can only overlay 2% of our paved roads in the last 10 years. So the life expectancy of that is like a 50-year rotation. It's just, it's just too great. So we'll have to work on increasing the amount of roads that we can treat and take care of. And that's a long-term goal for us, long-term challenge for us. The master transportation corridor plan is put together over the next 24 years. These are our projections. And what that does is when they talk about the MTCP, it's about adding lanes, turn lanes, gravel, changing gravel roads to pavement that have high-average daily traffic, and it works on our major corridors. So this is just another thing on our radar that we're facing in the future. So gravel roads are a challenge for us, as you know. And as I said, the reclamation, if we get that team together and get that figured out, I think that'll take care of a lot of those. Again, we're able to regravel 25 lane miles per year. That's an 84-year cycle. So if you happen to buy one after we've regraveled it, then 84 years later, we'll come back and regravel it again. It is tough to do, and so we're looking at it as well. And I think the reclamation system that we're looking at will take care of a lot of that in the future. So we're always looking for efficiencies. Our entry-level training programs we implemented this year, I think Mr. Yankowski could probably speak to that later if you want to, sir, but I think it was built from the ground up. The employees put the training program together. It wasn't top-down driven, and there's a lot of buy-in, and they're excited about it. And we've also put it online as well. And so that, I think that was a huge benefit to us because it increased the employees' efficiency out there on the road, and we can track that. Now, I want to talk a little bit before I go to the next slide, if I may. Listen, I can't do anything. I can have all the trucks in the world. I can have the best trucks in the world. I can have everything that's perfect, but I can't do it without people. And when I have a 20% rollover in highway, it's killing me. We're hemorrhaging. And so it's tough for me to keep people in those trucks. And these are good people that we have. And we got good people doing good things for good people, which is our citizens. And so I think it's important that we somehow work with them and somehow find a way to maintain them within the county. This is a wonderful place to work for. I've been here 15 years. I wouldn't want to work anywhere else. But people have families and they're trying to make a living. So I would just please keep that in mind. Our human capital is so important to us and I just can't express how important it is to us. So that's all I have.
Okay. Questions? No, Commissioner Walrath.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I think we all recognize and understand the transportation issues facing the county. But I want to try to kind of understand this even better and put a finer point on it. It looks like our transportation budget's about $19.5 million this year. And you articulated to us how we're still falling short. You know, we're falling short on maintenance gravel roads significantly. I think we're falling short on repaving. We're falling short on deferred maintenance. I mean, we're falling short in a lot of areas. What, in your estimation, what's it going to take to get us back on track again? Where do we need to be from that $19.5 million to get us in a place where we're not falling behind?
I think Pete has some numbers to that. If you're looking for numbers, that's the big part, is finances. Do we have an idea of...
I mean, if we put an extra, you know, $2 million, $5 million, $20 million a year towards it, you know, when are we going to catch up? That's kind of what I'm looking at here or trying to understand. And I know that's a big question and I apologize.
It is a big question. It's the, you know, $100 million question, Commissioner, honestly. What we have been gauging over the last few years through the financial roadmap is a target to get to an additional $16 million. See what that does, how that starts to snowball in the right direction. Do a full assessment. I know Public Works is working on bringing an asset management system online that will give a more concrete, more articulate assessment of costs associated with what that is as we continue to combat, if you will, the increasing cost of commodities. And so $16 million was the original target, then to be assessed as we get further.
And what do you mean $16 million was the original?
$16 million additional to go into roads that we currently don't have. So 2.3 million was...
Is that $16 million per year additional?
That's correct.
Okay, got it.
Annually, that's correct. So we had put an additional in the 2017 budget. We had put an additional $2.3 million ongoing. So the differential to get to $16 million and then understanding that as that asset management system can get online, as we can hopefully start to see that snowball in the right direction and get good numbers, we can come back and say, okay, this was our best guesstimate at this time. And now we know based on this, we need this much for gravel, this much for paving, this much for federal match, and really provide a more specific number.
Nicholas, correct, Commissioner. So just to tell you, there's a lot of lymph acts or a lot of determining things. The key thing here is, once we do our inventory management, and we will have a better idea of what we're looking at. Right now, we're working off of, I think it's 13 numbers. And that, you know, so the important thing for us is let's get a handle on everything that we have and then we can come back and say, okay, here's our deltas and here's what we need to do to get there. So I can't give you a straight answer or a hard number. It depends. Is it gravel roads? Is it drainage? Is it paved roads? It's tough to do, so.
Sure. And I know it's a hard question.
Yeah. Thank you.
Commissioner VanderWor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Perhaps, you know, a little bit of my understanding of that. Even with the ballot measure money, the $16 million or whatever it comes out to be, and that it will be dependent on how the economy goes in every given year with the changes that we've done with the ballot measure. We're still going to be short in our gravel and paved road and other projects. So as you and I have talked, right, we'll need to use the innovation of the team that you have and continue to be looking at technology applications to make the difference between the unfulfilled requirement and the funds that we're going to be able to bring in because there's still a delta between those two. Now, I'm confident that we can close most of that. We may never actually completely close it, but I'm confident that we can close a big part of it. And I'm confident in that because we do have a great team in DPW and you guys have a ton of innovation. And from the charts, you can see there's more coming, right? More innovation coming. And we'll need to do that. So this will, over the course of the next several years, this will be a really tough issue to work through. But from where I stand, I think we need to do everything we can to work on efficiencies in the county so that we can deal with this concern. And what it is, as you know, it's about getting us back to a repair, replacement cycle time that's tenable, that's acceptable for the county. And you've heard me say this several times, this is so important that we work really hard on this because if we don't do it, if we don't get mostly there, when we have the next economic downturn, which we inevitably will have, we'll be faced with a really big challenge of where does that reduced revenue go? Continuing to repair roads or holding on to our employees because we're essentially a service provider for the community? So that, I think, a key to this in my head is about doing everything we can to address this problem, which will then prepare us for the next economic downturn so we can ride that storm. So you've heard me say that before, but I guess I'm just reiterating that and I feel very strongly about that. One other quick question I have, and you did mention something about fiber, about trying to get fiber out. So you may be aware of this, but I just wanted to make sure you know about it. CDOT is going to fund fiber optic between Manitou Springs and Woodland Park. And there will be an opportunity there for the county to take advantage of that. And the person that's been working that on the staff is Jeff Eckert from IT. So to the extent that, you know, you have an interest in doing that, doing more of that, using that to improve our efficiencies and so forth, we will have an opportunity, which I think is coming in 2018. I think they're going to do this in 2018. And so I just wanted to mention that because I don't think I had had a chance to say that to you, to go talk to Jeff, so that, you know, there can be an opportunity there. And I don't know what your needs are up you pass with regard to the county, but there will be fiber laid there and there will be an opportunity that we won't have to spend the money to actually lay the fiber.
Now that you say that, Commissioner brings up a point that I need to make to this board and publicly. We do have a great team, but I can't do it without the help of IT, HR, budget and finance. I mean, we rely on every department in this county to make things happen. It's a team effort. So when we start seeking efficiencies, changing jobs, looking for money, looking for IT solutions, it's not just the DPW team, it's the El Paso County team. And we really heavily rely on those services and those people. And you've got some great folks in this county.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with that. Maybe one last thing, but this, I think, is important. When we kind of try to figure out how to get the delta closed, there's a lot of funding sources, right? There's PPRTA, there's our own county general funds, there's grants, which I know we've been pretty aggressive at pursuing both state and federal. We need to do that. Maybe we need to do more. Then there's the developer-funded projects. And to the extent that those roads, when they're initially built, are built right, that's also very important. And I know that we've done a lot of work in the county to address that so that we don't have future problems there. But those are all the funding sources that become a piece and a part and a component of all of this. So when we get into trying to figure out how to close that delta between the unfunded requirements and the budget that we're able to apply, all of that's in play. Thanks.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can you go back and show slide 32?
Sure.
So, and I've been emphasizing this for a whole year. I keep bringing up, you know, when I talk to constituents from when I was running and now that I am actually a sitting county commissioner, the issues that come up are roads, roads and infrastructure, and public safety. Those are the issues that the constituents keep bringing up to me and they've done so the entire year that I've been a commissioner. And so I've been emphasizing it and that's what I want to prioritize in our budget. And I think somebody, you mentioned, you know, the voters. I think the voters showed a mandate that they believe roads, whether it's different types of roads, highways, infrastructure, is very, very important to them and they're seeing failing infrastructure. You know, slide 32 actually shows the numbers, how bad the roads are getting. Out on the countryside with the gravel roads, even those kind of roads, I consistently get calls on it and I'm sure you're very aware of that every year. And then with this no removal requirements, it's just something that we see degradation in these roads, infrastructure that needs to be taken care of. And that's why I've been stressing for the year I've been a commissioner, addressing these needs. And I hope we do that in this budget. Thank you.
We're fortunate to have the staff that would say, if we could give this county perfect roads, we'd do it. We'd do it every day of the darn week. We're just limited as to what we can do, so.
Commissioner Lilton.
Thank you. If you can stand slide 32 to start with, since we're there. So in looking at some of the, you know, maintenance backlog this year, I think Nicola kind of addressed it, but if you wanted to add any further comments, will 1A funding change any of this as far as what we were able to do for the backlog?
So this...
You're talking about our most recent... Correct. Yes, and you'll see that as part of my presentation this afternoon on what it looks like, what original, and then how the impacts and what we anticipate and how to address this moving forward. It's all built into the financial roadmap.
Okay. Because I just wanted to make sure that if, you know, we promised voters that with 1A funding, that some of this, so we wouldn't have the 41% of the paved roads are failing, we would go down in that because of funding that people and voters approved. Second slide that I'd like to go to is slide number 11, if that's possible. Just looking at the fleet management-based budget here, since we're talking budget, the increase from 2017 to 18, is that due to the leasing program? Is that what that's from?
That's actually built into your budget policy and based on prior direction.
This is like an annual escalator or something like that?
It is. And I believe either in 2018 or 2019, you get to the additional amount needed to get to... This is the total budget, but you'll recall, Commissioner, I think it was back in either for the 2015 or 14 budget, we had grave concerns about the fleet equipment. And so actually, in your budget process policy, it states that we will continue to increase that until we get to a point where we have a replacement schedule in place. And we may be there either in the 2018 or 2019 budget. So that should already be whole, if you will, and addressed through this. So there's no additional funding that is being requested through that. But that was based on prior direction and through prior financial roadmaps.
Right, so that was an escalator that was built in, in prior years that we did. However, looking at the leasing program, you'll address that because I think that may take care of some of that as well, so.
Well, I believe the leasing program, what that did is that just enabled, it was a better use of that funding to catch up with the backlog that we had in place and that aging equipment. That'll just get us there faster. So it's a better use of that funding.
Right, okay. And then slide 35, if we could, will be my last one. I see in here the 2015, 16, 17, but I don't see the 2018 budget. And I know between 2016 and 2017, there's, you know, $3,238,000 and some odd change that's an increase from 16 to 17, but what about 18? Whereas...
And that question has come up with, because it's been different in different presentations. And I know Commissioner VanderWor and I had a conversation about this on Thursday. So where you have, some of the departments have brought forward for the 2018, a budget where it includes restricted funds and that is a known amount. In 2018, where there have been changes that they have known about due to, for example, IT had a reclassification due to the cost allocation. But most departments and offices where they're receiving unrestricted general funds, they are leaving 2018 out until we know what the direction is from the Board of County Commissioners on how to proceed with the financial roadmap. And once that direction is given, then we will have the 2018 budget. So at this point, it would be presumptuous for the Department of Public Works to say, this transportation, engineering, and highway budget is going to be this for 2018 when you all haven't given us direction on how much additional we should put into that as a result of all of the above and the direction on December 5th.
I just thought that, I mean, some of the presentations have gone into wish lists, right? 2018, what it would look like.
That's right.
And I just didn't see it, so I was wondering why. Thank you for the clarification.
And we did talk about, and I know Ms. Cassidy and Ms. Simmons have been working on a more consistent template and format for next year because I know it has been confusing because some slides have had unrestricted funds, some have had restricted. And so that there's a very clear understanding as to apples stay with apples and oranges stay with oranges and there's not confusion for you as a board and then for the citizens that are watching the presentations.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner VanderWor.
Yes, thank you. I'd say, I appreciate that you'll work on that with a little bit more of a consistent format. To my fellow commissioners' comment about that, because I had asked that same question, right, earlier? I think the sense I have of it is, there was a little bit of a leeway in the different departments about how they addressed it, but I think for the departments that were essentially not asking for additional money, they just put the 18 number on there because it was the same number. But then for these other departments, and this is certainly one of the departments where we have concerns about meeting, you know, some of the challenges, about getting our roads addressed, that 18 budget has been left off because we're going to deliberate on it. And, you know, depending on what we can work on and do, we might be able to put a little money there or maybe a lot more money there, so it was left off. So I think that was kind of a little bit of the rationale.
Any other questions?
Wow. Okay.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Nope. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Commissioners, I believe we're 15 minutes early. Woo! We'll have Mr. Walton, who I'm sure will keep us on track and possibly even earlier. We'll see for our community services. I believe he's next on the schedule. Is that correct? Thank you.
Well, she's on for an hour. You need to go? Okay. We're going to take a quick recess.
People got to go, they got to go.
About that, but I will assure you today that those will be done if I'm out there myself constructing those. And then finally, at the bottom, the last bullet, the Drake Lake, you're aware that we had a problem with the embankment. We've been a short-term fix for that, but we'd like to do the long-term repair where we'll be out to design on that soon and then do the repair in 2018 as well. In my time here, over 14 years, by far the most improvements we've ever done in the county park system in one given year. I think we're touching practically every part of the county at this point. And honestly, this is not the complete list. There are other smaller projects as well. So I think our residents will be very pleased if we're able to complete most of these projects in 2018. It'll make a dramatic difference in the park system. And thanks for your support financially for these projects. Commissioners, each year, we establish performance indicators to determine how we're doing within the community and get good feedback from our public on what they would like to see us focus on. That's what you see before you. And so we have indicators in regards to the number of customers that we serve, evaluations that we do in respective facilities or programs, facility reservations, fundraising, volunteer hours. And so we feel if we accomplish these, we've done a pretty good job for our citizens throughout 2018. And so we certainly will make every effort to do that. Likely, we'll add a few more onto this as well. But I think overall, once again, if we can accomplish these, I think we've had a pretty good year. Commissioners, just a quick overview of the financial side of the Community Services Department. We operate on about $11.8 million budget. The good news is about $9.3 million of that comes from third-party funding. That's lottery funds, tipping fees, funds from the state to do community corrections programs. And so we have net general fund support of about $2.4 million for what we do for El Paso County and those services that I talked about earlier on the slides. So if you divide that into the number of residents that we have in El Paso County, it's about $3.76 per resident per year for what they pay in to support it through general tax support. And so what we like to think of as good value for El Paso County, and we think overall we do a pretty good job with that. But we're always open to suggestions. If there's better services we can provide, modifications to those services, doing away with some if they're no longer popular or needed, we're always willing to do that as well. But bottom line for us is provide value for our residents. And I think, in my opinion, at least financially, we do a pretty good job with that. Commissioners, just a couple of budgetary highlights that our citizens help us raise about $200,000 per year that support ongoing services and programs and facilities within community services. That's through sponsorships, donations, helping us run facilities like nature centers as well. 30,000 volunteer hours. As I've said to you before, we probably couldn't do what we do without them. They perform very critical tasks for us, and we greatly appreciate that. Under bullet number two, we're really blessed to have a very creative and dedicated staff, very passionate, very innovative as well, always looking to improve. And so we appreciate their efforts. Grant funds have been very helpful for us. Usually, we're somewhere between $500,000 and $1 million per year in grants, depending on the given year, depending on the projects. But been very blessed to be able to receive a number of grants. And certainly, 1A funds as well. We were very fortunate and thank you for 2014. You allowed us to go to the voters. 70% approved 1A funds for $2 million. We doubled that with donations and matches and all of that, so we had a $4 million investment in the park system. We will attempt to do the same thing with 1A funds in 2017 as well. And so those have been very helpful. Probably one of our biggest challenges, that fourth bullet, is maintaining major maintenance within especially the county park system. We're going on 45 years or so in the park system as well. Some facilities have been there that entire 45 years. And new roofs, upgrading irrigation system, upgrading playgrounds, it's been a challenge for us during the difficult budget times. And so we'd like to focus more on that. Whenever we do polling and surveying of our citizens, taking care of what we have is really at the top of their list. And so we want to continue to try to do that, not only park system, but any other facilities that we're responsible for. And so look forward to focusing on that more in 2018. So Commissioners, today, we have two additional funding requests for you. They're both involving justice services. The first one is a criminal justice planner. As you may recall, we established the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council this past year. That consists of 24 members throughout the Pike's Peak region, elected leaders, criminal justice experts, social service providers, and many others as well. President Glenn serves as our chair, so thank you for that. Overall, I think it's going quite well. We've met now twice and have had good discussions, and we'll talk more about the action taken by CJCC here in a minute. But we also established five working committees as well, focused on particular areas of criminal justice within El Paso County and the Pike's Peak region. So that's another 50 members involved in that as well. So now we've got 70 individuals focusing on criminal justice throughout the Pike's Peak region, and I think it will just continue to grow and advance. Staffing-wise at this point, you're looking at it, myself and Christine behind us here. And we're very happy to do that, and we've done the best we can with our other responsibilities as well. But what we've seen in most of the Colorado counties that have an active criminal justice coordinating council, they have some sort of a planner position that assists the council, assists the committees, but also looking innovative ideas, long-term programming opportunities, grant funding as well, and I'll talk about that on the next slide. But that seems to really make that CJCC really go. And when we had Arapahoe come down to talk to us about their council, they brought two of their planners with them. So roughly $70,000 for this position. Since we spend about half of our money in general fund to support at least for criminal justice and public safety, it seems like a good investment for us to have a planner dedicated to innovative and creative change and looking for additional funding for our area. So at some point, we think this would be a great investment for our criminal justice system. We did present this to the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council in the third meeting on November the 7th. They were supportive of that and did vote in that capacity to include it somewhere within the five-year budget roadmap. There was discussion as well about cost sharing with the City of Colorado Springs. Police Chief Carey is on the CJCC, and he was certainly supportive, certainly couldn't make any guarantees. He does not make those final decisions, but said they'd be willing to explore that with Colorado Springs as well. So if you have interest in this position, we're happy to attempt to do that as well. Commissioners, on this slide, you have responsibilities for the planner position. I'll just touch on a couple of key highlights. We talked about innovation, collection of data and sharing of data is what we hear is a bit of a challenge, and I'm sure that's the case in any county in the country, that you've got the silos and people collecting their own data, trying to share that data. It would be quite helpful, at least what we're being told by our partners within the CJCC, identifying any gaps we have within our criminal justice system, seeking grants. There are a number of those out there when they're in the process of doing that now with the CJCC, but we can do more if we had a dedicated staff member attempting to do that for us. And then finally, looking at special projects being assigned to CJCC, kind of thinking of kind of a free agent that they can, if you travel to a conference and you hear about a program or service that might work well in El Paso County, having a dedicated staff and be able to research that program, potentially bringing it back to El Paso County would be really quite helpful as well. So the bottom line for the amount of funds that we commit to criminal justice and public safety, having a planner position committed to this makes sense to us, and we think it's a good investment for El Paso County and our region. Commissioners, the second additional funding request we have is the expansion of the pre-trial services program. Just to give you a bit of background on the program goals for this overall program, what we attempt to do is to provide our courts with accurate and timely information and provide those to our courts for defendants that can be possibly released on a PR bond. That's a decision of the courts to do that, but we do the assessment, provide the information to the courts for their decision. When we're doing that, we're certainly always thinking of public safety, always thinking of court appearances as well. And so when we do that evaluation, that's our primary goal, is to provide that information to the courts so they can make that decision. And so we've worked well with the courts for the staffing that we have. On the second bullet, we really feel expanding the pre-trial services program can help us with our jail overcrowding issues that we have. And I'll give you some data here in a couple of slides. But certainly our focus, and I know the sheriff visited with you as well during here's budget presentation, and we're challenged at this point with our jail population. And we think we can help with that. The third bullet is if they do qualify for a PR bond, having them go back to their jobs, back to their family hopefully prevents that spiral effect. We don't want to see them visiting with Julie's staff in a couple of months, looking for some sort of benefits because they've lost their job or they have family-related issues. We'd like to get them back to that as quickly as we can while they're waiting their court proceedings versus staying in our county jail. And then finally, providing pre-trial supervision services. The courts can order drug and alcohol testing. We do provide that currently for the PR bond participants. And also, we make phone calls, contacts with them, reminding them of the court dates. Very frustrating to our judges to establish the court dates about a PR bond and then not show up for their court appearances. So we help remind people to do that. Commissioners, in our 2017 to 21 plan, we do have two objectives that address this specifically. One being to increase and improve our pre-trial services core functions, certainly by expansion of the program. We think we can do that. And objective six talked about ways we can reduce the length of stay in El Paso County jail. We think we can help with that as well, too. Commissioners, a bit of background information for you on the pre-trial services program. Prior to 2008, we had really a pretty robust pre-trial services program. We had 10 staff at the budget of $500,000. The average caseload they had at that point in time was 440, and the jail population was about 1,200 at that point. During 2007, 8, and 9, difficult budget years for you, we're all aware of, the program was defunded at that point. And so then in 2012, the former sheriff brought the program back, funded by PR bond fees, hired one staff member to assist with that. It was transferred to Community Services several years ago. And today, we have two PR bond commissioners operating on a budget of $118,000. Their caseload's about 275 PR bond participants at any given time. Our CJC population's about 1,600 on average. You heard from the sheriff, it's actually gone above that as well over the last number of months. We reached out to other counties that operate pre-trial services programs and PR bond programs, and you have that before you on the screen. I'll just give you some averages here versus talking about the respective counties. The pre-trial services budget average is about 1.4 million. The full-time staff's about 15. They do about 5,000 assessments per year, and they have about 3,000 pre-trial services or PR bond clients throughout that particular year. So then you compare ours to the last line, you know, we're at $118,000, two staff members. And I want to stop here just for a second and really commend Christine and our PR bond commissioners that we have in place. When you look at the number of assessments we do and the number of individuals on PR bonds at this point, being done by two staff members, it's quite impressive. And so I just want to thank Christine and the PR bond commissioners. They're up very, very early, providing information to our judges, and they do really a marvelous job for the resources that they're provided. So Commissioners, when we started to look at our pre-trial services that we offer, the PR bond program as well, we invited the National Institute of Corrections to come to us this past summer. Some of you visited with that consultant that came in. And they've given us a very detailed recommendations. We picked five to bring to you today. The first one they're recommending is for us to expand the assessments that we do on potential defendants that could participate in the PR bond program. They would like us to assess all defendants. Likely, that won't occur anytime in the near future here in El Paso County, but we'd very much like to grow the number of assessments as well, which can lead to more individuals being on PR bonds. Staffing obviously will be an issue for that, which we'll talk about in a second. Second, they were suggesting that we modify the way we do our payment schedule for PR bonds. Currently now, you have to pay the PR bond before you leave our jail system, or you have to have a hardship waiver to waive that fee. So those are the two options. Also, there's a third, you can have a non-supervised PR bond. There is no fee involved as all. But the first two really relate to their payment schedule we're talking about here. So either you pay the fee before you leave CJCC, or you have a hardship waiver approved by the courts. So those are the two options that we have available to us. Obviously, we all benefit by freeing up bed space, quickly moving those individuals through our jail system, benefits the defendants as well, hopefully they're back to work, back to supporting their families as they're waiting their court proceedings. Under number three, they suggest that we expand our outcome measures. We'd be very happy to do that with some additional staffing, and we can provide additional data for you and others as well. I think we do a pretty good job with the two staff members that we have, but certainly we can do more. They also suggested expanding our supervised pre-trial services with the defendants that are out on a PR bond. Once again, not a problem for us to be able to do that with some additional staffing. And then there's some counties that have an administrative release authority that allow very low-level, low-risk defendants to be assessed by the PR bond commissioner and released at that point. So you could be looking at hours versus days. That's something we will certainly visit with our judges, sheriff, others about as well, something we can certainly explore as an opportunity as well. So Commissioners, if we've talked to our various stakeholders around the community and staff as well, looked at the assessment that was completed, what we would like to propose is a $400,000 increase to our pre-trial services program. That would allow us to hire four full-time intake staff, two part-time intake staff, two full-time case managers in addition to our two PR bond commissioners. That would bring us up to eight full-time and two part-time staff members. Still well below what other counties are at at this point, but we're pretty efficient, we're pretty effective. We think we can do very good work with this staffing. Under number one, as far as the investments, if we were to provide additional funding, we would like to see us be able to assess half of the defendants that come through CJC. That would take us from 1,600 to somewhere between 4,000 and 5,000 being assessed at that point. We think we can do that as we're staffed completely up at that point. Two, we'd like to expand the supervisory services that we provide to the courts. It gives our judges comfort if they see that we've got a very effective supervisory process in place when those that are out on PR bonds, we're making the phone calls, we're making sure that they're doing the drug and alcohol testing afforded by the courts. And so we would be able to do more of that, obviously, if we were to be able to expand our staff. We'd like to see our caseload grow from 275 to 500 on any given day, and so we're certainly interested in that. We think that would allow us to grow from roughly 125 individuals to somewhere between 250 and 300 on any given month that we have. So we could potentially see the CJC population go from 1,600 to 1,400. And I'm sure if the sheriff was here, he would indicate that would be helpful if we could reduce that jail population. And also, looking long-term as well, certainly another tower on the jail, staffing that tower is incredibly expensive. And if we could avoid that from occurring in El Paso County for some time, I think that's certainly helpful for everyone. And then finally, modifying the collection process for the PR bond fee. I do want to give you an update on that. We've had some action take place over the last day on that particular issue. The Pretrial Services Advisory Committee made yet met yesterday, did endorse a post-collection fee. And so once the PR bond is issued within that day, that individual would be released, and then it would be our responsibility to collect that fee, which is relatively common in Colorado as well. By statute, Chief Judge Bane has to approve any changes to our procedures. He did rule on that yesterday, just received the ruling here about 15 minutes ago saying that he supports that as well. And so we have now made that change. And so Christine and her staff are quickly adapting to that as we speak, and probably people being impacted right now within the PR bond program. We've had discussions with the courts about the possibility of the collection of that fee being assessed during the court proceeding process. In most cases, there's always going to be some sort of fee as a defendant moves through the court proceedings. In our opinion, it would be great just to attach that PR bond fee to that final payment and then transfer the money back to the county. There's questions whether that's workable or not, and we're trying to work through that. And we just started those discussions yesterday. But what I would hate to see is our PR bond commissioner spend a lot of time trying to collect fees versus doing what we're really wanting them to do and manage our PR bond program. So we need to go through that process and determine how we go through that collection process. And right now, it's quite high. We're quite successful because either you're paying the fee or you're getting a waiver for that fee. If we release and then collect, bit more of a challenge, as you can imagine, if they are out of our jail system at that point. Certainly, we will give them information to pay the fee, but as we know, it'll be a bit more of a challenge to do that. We'd love if I have a streamlined process that it works well and doesn't require our PR bond commissioners to spend all day on the phone reminding people of paying a fee. Commissioners, we appeared before the Pretrial Services Advisory Board on November the 1st, and they did endorse the expansion of the pre-trial services program, somewhere within the five-year financial roadmap. We also appeared before the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council on November the 7th. They also endorsed as well. The Criminal Justice Coordinating Council did compare the two recommendations, the planner position versus the expansion of the pre-trial services program. They rated the expansion of the pre-trial services as a bit higher than the planner. Love to see them kind of go on parallel tracks with potentially more money being provided to pre-trial services. But I wanted to give you a heads-up, the council viewed the expansion as a higher than they did the planner position, and President Glenn was there can certainly weigh in on that as well. So Commissioners, with that, we'd be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Questions? Commissioner Vanderwerf.
Thank you, Mr. President. As a baseline, I support this idea. I think we do need to increase, you know, our pre-trial services because we get into a place where we have people that are incarcerated that maybe there's no reason for that. I think also the other side of that is also true. We might be in a place where somebody that should be incarcerated doesn't get incarcerated, and this additional research upfront, I think, will help. Couple of questions, though. So with the existing, what, it's 116,000 or 118,000 that you have right now, you have a fair amount of third-party contribution that covers that, and that's at least what's said in this earlier chart. So, you know, I'd say I support this, but I have an interest in us seeing if we can continue to pursue, you know, third-party support, whether that's public, private, or whatever it is. And, you know, maybe make sure we have a program that goes forward that is expanded, but continue to pursue these other sources of revenue so that there can be contribution. I support the idea of talking to the city about it. I think you mentioned that a few minutes ago. They get value out of this as well. So I think that's something that is reasonable to have a discussion with the city about.
Commissioner, if I could just break down the 117,000 for you now. Roughly, that's 77,000 in PR bond fees that are being paid on an annual basis, and there's about $40,000 in general fund support.
Oh, the 77 is a bond fee?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks. I didn't realize that.
And hopefully, the bond fee as we expand the program goes up, as long as we can keep that collection rate relatively high. If we have, you know, double, triple the number of people, obviously, the revenue will go up.
Okay, so I guess we're talking about 100K, that 100,000, give or take presently, and you want to expand that by 400. So the program overall would be a 500,000-ish?
Be pretty similar to what we had back prior to 2008, correct?
And then the bond fees would be collected, so that would be, it wouldn't be 77,000. Hopefully, it would be substantially more, but there'll be contribution along those lines.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Waller.
Thank you, Mr. President. And certainly, the idea here is if we expand this program, grant more PR bonds, it's, the cost savings isn't shown in your budget line, but theoretically, that gets folks out of the jail, reduces the jail population, and that ends up, you know, saving us dollars from that perspective as well, which would be reflected in the sheriff's budget line.
Correct. The sheriff will say a lot of those costs are fixed if he was here today, but certainly from a stress standpoint, going from 1,600 to 1,400 managing that population would be helpful. And long-term, certainly, you're correct, Commissioner, there'll be cost savings as well.
Commissioner Zales.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just wanted to reiterate that. That was going to be my question or comment for you to expand on, was that this is a long-term a cost savings to the county if we were to implement that.
What we have heard, and this is general information, the third tower, somewhere between 60 and 80 million, somewhere between 12 and 15 million to staff, and maybe, Ms. Sapp's coming, she may have more information on that.
Yes, the last estimate that we did on throwing up another pot or another tower, because it's not something that you can phase in, it's an all-or-nothing deal, was about 72 million. It would probably, quite frankly, that's an old estimate, it'd probably even be close to about 100 million. We would not have those funds, so that would be something that we would have to finance. An annual payment on that would be roughly, you know, simple math, about 10 million annually, and then to operate that, anywhere from 12 to 15 million. It is our understanding that the sheriff anticipates that if this were brought online fully, it would reduce the number of inmates by roughly 200 annually. Just to give you an idea, just to feed those inmates, I believe, is about $3.35 a day. So, simple math, take that by 200 inmates, assuming that was 365 days, about 250,000 a year if that were to be the, you know, obviously, just doing simple math. So there is savings, and that does not address the medical component. And then, of course, the staff, the pressure on the staff as we hit max, max capacity. And some of us were here last time we hit max capacity, and we start turning away inmates, and we start to have a lot of other, there's obviously a domino effect of difficult things that we don't want to have to experience, not just in the CJC, but also throughout the community. So trying to be proactive makes sense.
Commissioner Lilton.
Thank you. Tim, go back to, on slide 16, it just talks about the proposed pre-trial services program expansion. Help clarify for me, did you say that the post-release collection was mandatory or is something that we got to choose? Was there something that, there was some decision that was made?
Yes, yesterday, the Pretrial Services Advisory Board met, and that board's been in place for a number of years and advises the chief judge on the management of the pre-trial services program. They endorsed post-collection. Chief Judge Bane ruled on that as well, and we have that ruling today saying it now will be post-collection.
Okay. There's no way to go back and modify that? I'm personally not for that, because if people are out on PR bond in my mind or expectation, the amount of funds that are going to be expended to try to collect this is going to be unreasonable, I think. And so I don't know if that's something that can go back and be revisited. I'm open to being compelled that that was a good decision.
Certainly. I'm looking at the state statute, and certainly, Ms. Folsom can weigh in as well, but it does give the authority to the chief judge to determine the procedures that we use for the pre-trial services program. And it was very much, support was given yesterday by the committee, and Judge Bane has ruled as well. So I'm not aware of any opportunities there.
Mr. Wilkens, you're stating that correctly. The statute does provide the sole authority for setting these processes and procedures and fees to the chief judge of the judicial district.
Okay.
And I think, just piggybacking on that point, you know, it's one for, there's enough data to show why that's important. So on its surface, you think, you know, is that a good idea? But good proactive pre-trial services programs, they do an excellent job, you know, stepping in and making sure that people can get to court. And there's plenty of cases throughout the front range, and I think it's probably important to just continue to brief the board on that so we can raise the community awareness of that. But a proactive pre-trial services program pays for itself.
And I'm not discounting that. I'm just saying the PR bond. I am for the, I am in favor of the program, and certainly, the pre-trial services program comparison between the other counties is compelling enough for me to move forward on that. And I know that it does, you know, reduce those other services, like you said, with the Department of Human Services, where people, you know, are out of a job simply because of, you know, a reason of waiting in jail to have their trials or to go to court. So I'm for that. I just was confused about why we'd allow them to post-bond and to collect fees after that bond.
Commissioner Waller.
Yeah, thank you. And I appreciate that thought. I think the issue becomes, you have people that are eligible for PR bonds and are granted a PR bond, but because they can't post the, you know, because they can't pay the $55 fee, they end up staying in jail. And, you know, they might end up staying in jail for multiple more days. And I, you know, then it becomes, well, is it, you know, they're eligible for a PR bond, and it, you know, it seems if we can get them out of jail, that creates a cost savings of not having another inmate in jail versus, you know, the loss in the fee requirement. And so it's, you know, it's kind of one of those deals where I think President Glenn expressed it perfectly, you know, we do more of that hard work upfront, it ends up paying off at the back end.
I do want to add that, you know, we've had a waiver program in place for hardship cases ever since I've been involved in the program as well. But that does take some time, maybe just a couple of days, but that's still two additional days that they're in. And Chief Judge Bane felt it was important to go ahead and release on the day the PR bond is approved. I did want to make one point I failed to mention as well, is when we look at Arapahoe, and you have that schedule there in front of you, their average jail population is 1,000, you know, ours is 1,600, similar-sized counties as well, and there may be some difference of criminal justice issues within respective counties. But reducing our jail population would be helpful for everyone. And so certainly, that's one of our goals through the expansion of the pre-trial services program.
Commissioner Vanderwerf.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, if, I'm kind of hearing some of these numbers and just want to ask, you know, kind of a question if these numbers sound valid. So it might, the reduction in the prison population, maybe that would save about 250,000. That was a number that Nicola just
was a number that Nicola just mentioned, and then it looks like there's a majority of the current 100,000 being paid for by the $55 fee. If we expand the program, there'll be more people paying that, and that's, I guess, presently, maybe roughly 70% of that 118,000. We go to this post-collection environment, we, that probably will go down, but even if it's at 50% of a $500,000 program, then that's another 250, so we're talking 250 in $55 collection and 250 in reduced jail, and that's 500,000, that's the program right there. And then, so that's just kind of the monetary consideration, where I think Commissioner Glenn's point is valid, that it'll pay for itself, but even with that, that doesn't actually include the public safety value of making sure we keep those people that should remain incarcerated, keep them incarcerated, and also release these folks, that they're not a flight risk, they're going to come to their hearings and these kinds of things, and so there's that component that's, that's not monetized in value, but that's added to it. So, it just seems to me, this makes sense to do, and it's a matter of making the program work right, because there are pretrial services that have better effects than others, so we want to make sure we have the right ones and this kind of stuff. So I think that's, that's the key to making it successful. Thanks.
Commissioner Waller.
Thank you. And certainly, the last thing I would add to all of this is the social costs related to it as well. If we can, you know, get a guy out of jail that can then continue to keep his job and provide for his family, that's, that's right for us to do. I think that's, you know, we're, I mean, we've sort of been talking about the cost savings related to all of this, and that's really important, but it's also about doing what's right for our community, and I think that having robust programs this way that keeps people out of jail and hopefully gets them on the track to becoming successful, productive members of society is the thing that we should be doing, and I think that it helps these pretrial services, having a robust pretrial services program helps in that way as well. So, yeah, I, I mean, I agree with my colleagues here that this is definitely the right way to proceed.
And the only thing I want to add is just kind of paint a picture from a political standpoint, rolling all these things in here, when you, rarely do you find times where you can make an investment, and the return on that investment is tremendous, and when you, if you've been around here long enough, you realize how difficult it is when it comes to improvements with the jail. I mean, we don't have an option to have a jail, and if we can come up with a way to help actually manage that population so that we don't have to go out with a capital campaign, that is something that's tremendous to get factored into this whole thing. And in the event, let's look at the scenario where, you know, the voters would not support that. It puts us in a situation where we still have to provide a service, and then decisions are made that have unintended consequences to where the voters then lose trust in their elected officials, because we still have a statutory obligation to provide jail services. And I think that people who've been around here long enough understand how COPs and all that stuff inflame this particular community. So if we can head that off now and make investments in the right place, think about all the goodwill that has happened with 1A and even with the city storm. Those things only happen when there's trust and confidence in their elected officials. So again, this program is something that, you know, when it comes time to put the numbers in, I think it's a great return on investment, and, you know, we spent a lot of time talking about, we want to come up with, with metrics to be able to measure these things, so that we can actually, you know, show that it's actually working as intended, so points are well-taken. Any other questions? All right. Very good.
Thank you very much for your time.
Well, we're moving along.
We are moving along, and Commissioners, we'd like to be sensitive to our volunteers and our citizens who dedicate their time to serve on our board. So with that, we have asked Mr. Dean, Mr. Kelvin Dean, we all, we all know him. He is our, he is our chair of our citizen outreach group, and as we talked about, there are certain compliances that we have, that we do, that we do vet, obviously. We do not, we do not do our budget process in a vacuum, we do vet this through community groups and through our citizen groups, and so Mr. Dean has a brief presentation to just outline, outline what our citizen outreach group has seen. I think this will be a brief one, and then we'll go to Ms. Crowe.
Hello, thank you, folks, for having me here today. I just have a couple of things I'd like to go over. The first thing is the county's five-year financial roadmap. During, during this past year, we had the opportunity to have Nicholas' team appear and give us, during the citizen outreach group meetings, and she went through the roadmap on where we're heading over the next five years. The group had an opportunity to discuss any questions that they might have regarding the way the finances were laid out, and at this point in time, we believe that the strategic plan that is in place is the correct path that we need to be following, and we're in agreements on that. Okay? So that, the primary meeting for that event took place on February the 27th, okay? Also, on September 18th, Nicholas' team had an opportunity to come in and speak with us about the tax measures that were coming up and the proposed changes that might be made in the event everything passed, and luckily for us, there is a lot of support with our elected officials right now, and we have got some good things coming our way. So again, we believe that the information that was presented is very dynamic, and it is something that we need to support moving forward, okay? Also, on June 19th, we had an opportunity to speak to the sheriff's department about the public safety tax that was, that is in place. They informed us of the decisions that they have in place moving forward. We went over the annual report and the balanced budget information, and we also agree that that is a good opportunity moving forward to follow. Are there any questions for me today? This is fast.
Yeah, I don't know what your budget is, but we're improving it. It's, it's going up.
I tell you what, I think we have got such a good team in place right now that it leaves very little question on the part of my team and I as to whether we're doing the right things or not. So thank you very much for everything that you're doing for us.
Thank you. Any questions?
Commissioner Lilton.
Thanks. I just want to say that you guys definitely have an easier job than citizen outreach groups in the past, who had to hear from all of the elected officials that presented their budget before you, coming up with ideas or suggestions on how to modify that budget, you know, since we're in the position now with the economy the way that it is and as robust as it is, we're not having to ask to make those difficult decisions of what to not do. We're not having a lot of elected officials coming and saying they have an extreme shortfall at this point in time, but that we're continuing to move forward with our strategic plan and a robust manner, just as we said that we would, and I want to thank all of you that are on the committee. Please, on our behalf, thank them for the service that they have due to our, due for our community, and for really taking a citizen's view of how our budget runs, what services are provided, and looking to make sure that we are expending those dollars that are talked about and approved by the strategic plan for this, for the county.
Exactly. Very good. I will pass that along. And I know that, you know, Commissioner Glenn is our liaison at this point in time, but I would like to offer an open invitation to everyone here, if there, if there are any projects or anything that you have that you would like to bring to the group's attention, please, please feel welcome to come and see us at any time.
Okay, any last-minute comments? Commissioner Lilton.
Well, since you did mention that, are we going to have any more of the Citizens College? Is there one planned at all?
Yes, ma'am. The, the update on the Citizens College is that with Kono coming into the picture, there have been some changes made to where Kono is actually putting on some of the Citizens College, but the conversation behind the scenes is that the county does not want to get away from that completely and allow them to have it, so I believe in the future you will see them coming back.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? What I would propose, since I'm looking at our schedule, thank you, is a 30-minute lunch break, and then we pick up and proceed. Is that acceptable?
Is it here, everybody?
Yeah, it will be, I think, is it here? Yes, I'm pretty sure it came here at 11:30. So we're going to take a 30-minute lunch break and then proceed.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, my understanding lunch is here.
Oh, good.
Maslow's hierarchy needs was starting to kick in here.
With the next two presentations, I think it's important for us to...
I'm getting hungry.
Hold on one second, I'm looking. Hello, lunch is, yep, lunch is here, it's delivered and set up, so we will stand in recess. Okay, we are now back on the record. We have a presentation from Department of Human Services, great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners, Julie Crowe, Executive Director for the El Paso County Department of Human Services. I just want to start by thanking all of the people that support Department of Human Services operations such as finance and IT and our legal services, and all of you and all of the other county supports. We, just like the other departments, we couldn't do it without this great team of people around us, and I think El Paso County has a fantastic team, so thank you. We have greatly condensed our organizational chart, because it's 12 pages long, we have 601 staff, and so we just lumped them into major categories such as administration, contract management, children, youth, and family services, economic and administrative services, adult services, economic assistance, Colorado Works and operations, and staff development. And I'll just touch briefly on all of these, because you are already very familiar with our programs and supportive, so I won't get too much in the weeds. I did want to explain that Colorado is one of, I think, 12 states that are a state-supervised, county-administered system, and so the state provides policy and guidance, but the counties in Colorado actually deliver all of the services. And so it's a different setup. In some states, all services are state-operated. Colorado's lucky to be a state-supervised, county-administered system, meaning that counties administer all the programs and there's local control, and that's why sometimes you'll see things different in one county or over another, because we're able to really meet our local community needs. There was a time many years ago where the state, and I guess I won't say many, probably 10 years ago, when the state sought to take over county administration, and CCI and CHSDA pushed back pretty hard on that and really fought for local control. So I'm a big advocate of that, and I would imagine that you are, too. So when I talk about our, our services in child protection, we're really talking about child protection intake and ongoing, and intake is where calls of, and reports and allegations of child abuse and neglect come in, and we investigate those, we assess the families. As you heard from Amy Folsom, we participate in legal processes and court cases if we find that there has been dependency and neglect or abuse to a child, and we work really closely with a vast array of community partners, and I'll touch on that a little bit. Ongoing cases are opened when there has been a finding of abuse or neglect, and it's determined that services need to happen in a family. So an assessment lasts about 60 days. There's a requirement to close assessments in 60 days, and we are very good about doing that. You'll see that in my data later. In terms of other operations in children, youth, and family services, we have youth and family services ongoing units, which really focus specifically on the needs of our adolescents. We have kinship support units, which we're very lucky, in El Paso County, they do a great job finding kin. And one thing that we always try to do is, first of all, if it's possible, if a child's being abused or neglected, we try really hard to put in safety services and supports to keep that child at home if it's safe to do so. But if it's not, we look for relatives and kin as our next step, and our kinship unit is known to be one of the best in Colorado. It's big, and we look for relatives, we're very successful, we find them, and we place children with relatives when at all possible. We also have an adoption team that facilitates adoption for children that are legally free or relative guardian assistance program, which is sort of like an adoption, but it's a legal permanency for a child in the child welfare system. We have the child placement and consulting team that makes placement decisions around foster care and group care and residential placement. We try really hard to keep children out of residential placement or institutional care, because it's, there's a lot of evidence that shows that's not good for children, children hurt one another in residential care, and so we have significant efforts to try to minimize the need for institutional care, because we believe that kids need to grow up in a family when at all possible, and so if really a short-term residential placement is needed for treatment purposes, we'll do that, but we don't want kids to grow up in institutions, we want them to grow up in families. And we have our CHAFY team that really focuses on 14- to 18-year-olds and helping them become independent, so they do things like help them learn employment skills, and we work closely with the workforce center on some of these youth and classes, and also basic things that our children may not have learned, like how to balance their checkbook, how to fill out a lease, those sorts of things, because they may have missed some of those skills along the way, and we want to make sure that they're successful and do well after leaving foster care. On our children, youth, and family services operations, we also have core services. Core services are treatment services to prevent out-of-home placement or to help kids return home. We have our UM team, our utilization management, which reviews congregate care for its appropriateness or residential care. Family engagement meetings are meant to engage families and have them be part of the work instead of separate. We have our family visitation center, a great data team, so when you ask me for data, you see, see that, we have a good team that pulls things together, and you've all met Ken Sanders, who runs our center on fathering and does a great job, because obviously, we believe that dads are important, and we're one of the only counties that has a center on fathering, and so we really try to engage the dads and not forget about them, because a lot of times it's easy just to think about, about the mom or the custodial parent, but fathers play an important role, and so we really try to bring them into the picture and do a lot of work even to locate fathers if we're not sure where they are and get them engaged in services. Our economic security programs, you're very familiar with. We have staff development, quality assurance, and operations. We certainly provide a number of services to people who are in need, especially in an emergency situation, and need help temporarily until they become self-sufficient and are able to gain employment, so you know about SNAP and CCAP, which is our Child Care Assistance Program, and TANF. All of these services are really focused on short-term, trying to help people become self-sufficient, get a job, become successful, and CCAP is one that's very important, and I'll talk about it a little bit later, and some of our needs. I should say that we don't have any critical needs for you today, I meant to say that at the beginning. Most of our funding is state and federal funding, about 80%. The county provides a match, and I've always been very lucky that our county has been supportive and continues to do that. We do have 13 different locations where people can apply for benefits, and we're looking to expand even further into the community. So we don't talk often about aging and adult services, but this is so important, because it provides protection to our elderly adults. We investigate abuse and neglect, much like child welfare in some ways. The difference is adults have more choice in terms of, you know, they may choose to live a certain way, and we don't intervene unless we really need to, because they have more choice in terms of, we're little, small children, we're a little bit more involved, I guess, in terms of getting, getting involved in the family, and sometimes we have to kind of force our involvement. We do that a little bit less so in adult protection. We have a great adult protection team, and you'll see later that we have some of the best, if not the very best, outcomes and data in our adult protection team in the state, and our adult protection team often gets awards, so please, if you see those staff, be sure to thank them, because they do an amazing, amazing job. We'll talk a little bit about operations and contracts. We have 395 contracts in the department. These are almost, they're overwhelmingly operated by private nonprofit or some for-profit entities, and these include service contracts such as child support services, various childcare physical agreements, so these are childcare agencies that we contract with, foster care agencies, you've met a number of those, that provide foster care and adoption, child placement agencies, and this is, you know, a large, large number of contracts to manage. You'll hear later about how we're managing those and some improvements that we've made recently in terms of how we're... recently in terms of how we're auditing and overseeing those contracts and I'll tell you a little bit about that. We also have internship agreements with some of our local colleges and universities and some of the best staff that we hire start out as interns. And so, that's a big success story in our department. It's also an easy transition into child welfare to start as an intern because it can be a very overwhelming job with high numbers of referrals, assessments, and cases. And so, if you can come in and learn a little bit more slowly and start in as an intern, that's a good way. But we have interns for adult protection and other areas of our agency as well. And obviously, some memorandums of understanding are overseen by our contract department and minor purchase orders as well. And we work closely with finance on all of this and monitor it really closely. These are mandates and state statutes. This is very high level. I could probably, well, our Volume 7 rules are this thick. And so, this just touches on the high-level statutes that govern all of the things that we do, obviously, because most of our funding is state and federal. We're highly federally regulated and there's a lot of state regulations too. And so, I provide these for your reference, but won't go into each one of them. It would take months, literally, for us to go through all of those. And then, you know about our mission, which is to strive to protect our most vulnerable citizens while giving them efficient access to the services provided by local, state, and federal governments and that we aim to keep families together and help them to become self-sufficient. And we work closely with community organizations to stretch our safety net even further. I thought that I would not go through all of our strategic planning goals because we have the most, but these are here for you. And I do hope that your leisure, you'll look at all of these because I'm really proud of some of the work that our staff have done and we've made some amazing progress. We're on target. We're exceeding all of these and done some great work. So, I will say that our Not One More Child Committee is already making big, big plans for Child Abuse Prevention Month. So, we look forward to celebrating Child Abuse Prevention Month with all of you again in April. So, I'm just going to kind of go through these and skip to the next section unless you have any specific questions about our strategic planning goals. And we'll be back, you know, every quarter to update you again on these. If we move to this section called operating indicators, these are really important numbers. You're all aware that we receive more referrals of child abuse and neglect than any other county in the entire state of Colorado. It's something that I wish weren't the case, but it is just frankly, is what it is and El Paso County is growing really quickly. We also, you see our assessment numbers. So, once a referral happens, we screen it very closely to see if it's related to abuse or neglect. And if it is, we open an assessment. Assessment takes about 60 days and involves meeting the family and meeting the children and talking to people as well as collateral contacts and finding out what's going on. Sometimes, this is a matter of getting services and supports in place and we don't have to open a case or we find relatives that can help and get involved. So, not all assessments turn into a case. The numbers below show founded. So, those are the numbers of assessments that are actually founded, which is an official process governed by statute where we found someone for abuse or neglect that has some implications that are serious in terms of a formal finding and there's an appeal process for people that have a finding. But it also provides some protection because people who have been founded for abuse or neglect of a child may not be able to gain certain employment, maybe in a childcare center or something like that. And so, it's an important process and we work closely with the State Department of Human Services on that. And I didn't list our case numbers, but I'll just tell you that in 2016, we had 1,890 cases annually. And September, through September of 2017, we have 1,824. Below that, you see our foster care and kinship placements. These are monthly averages, so obviously throughout the year, that's much higher. The next slide shows for our aging and adult services programs, the number of reports that we receive. And these are tracked in our adult protection database system. You'll see, this goes through October, but if you look at the green line, it's 2017. For most months, we're up in terms of reports of abuse or neglect of aging individuals and adults who need protection. That could also be people with disabilities. So, just like child welfare, we're seeing an increase in our county. Part of it may be because our county census is growing so much. And so, as more and more people move into El Paso County, you will see more, unfortunately, more reports of child abuse and neglect and elder abuse and neglect. And so, some of these numbers just will increase because our county is growing. If you look at the next slide, we have our numbers for food assistance clients, food assistance applications, Medicaid assistance applications, Colorado Works, and Child Care Assistance Program. You can see that food assistance is down a little through September and applications are up just a tiny bit. Medicaid assistance, applications, it's hard to say. We may end up about the same this year. As the economy improves, we may see these numbers decrease and that would be a good thing because we are seeing more and more of the people that we serve get jobs. And last month, in our Colorado Works program, we celebrated, I think, the most jobs that we had seen in a month. So, we're really proud of that. Child care assistance is really, I like to say, it helps children be in safe childcare and it's a support to both our child welfare families because sometimes we can provide childcare to help have community visibility and safe settings for kids, allowing to make sure that those kids are safe. But it's also an employment program. In a two-generation model, when we can provide childcare, sometimes that allows a parent who maybe wouldn't have been able to go back to work to be able to get back to work and become self-sufficient and eventually move off of childcare assistance. So, it's an important program for our county and for the kids we serve. If you look at our next slide, these are just some of our numbers and really highlight the fantastic job that the staff and managers, supervisors, directors, my deputy director, Chris Garvin. It really shows all of the great work that everyone does because the state sets its goals high. And so, these goals are reached goals. And I happen to know that because I was at the state and helped set these goals. So, those are already considered to be very high goals. And as you can see, we exceed the goals and we're one of the best counties in the state in terms of this. If you look at the next slide, again, you see the state performance goals lined up to El Paso County's performance and really how well we're doing. And there's a lot of programs for us to keep track of and El Paso County performance is quite high in many of these important services around child protection, adult protection, adult financial, all of these areas. Economic security are quite amazing. When we talk about budgetary highlights, CCI and CHSDA this year, this is our Colorado Counties Inc. and Colorado Human Services Directors Association noted, child welfare and CCAP continue to be underfunded and are top priorities for the 2017-18 budget process. I can't tell you how that budget process will work out this year in the legislature. I can tell you that in 2014, there was a workload study in child welfare that showed that as a state, we needed 574 new caseworkers, which was an increase of 49% statewide. The Child Welfare League of America says that caseworkers who are investigating child abuse and neglect and ongoing caseworkers should carry about 12 cases per worker. These are very demanding cases, sometimes dangerous cases. People, our casework staff are going in homes where there may be substance abuse, domestic violence, mental health issues, very serious issues, and those are stressful cases. And so, having a 49% shortage was a serious issue. The study also found in 2014 that there was a shortage of 122 child welfare supervisors statewide. The state legislature has taken action to gradually start to put funding into this system and bring those numbers up. And so, for the last few years, they've provided anywhere between 80 and 100 new workers to start closing that gap. It's not closed yet. And in our county alone, we estimate needing seven to 10 caseworkers and one more supervisor to really be staffed appropriately to get to that 12-to-1 ratio. We do know that the governor's office has put his budget up and they're requesting 100 new caseworkers this year. I don't know if that'll happen, but it would certainly be a good thing for El Paso County. Commissioner Waller sits on our Child Welfare Allocation Committee and has been a huge advocate for our county. But we're funded about $8 million less than Denver and we're actually a bigger county. And so, we continue to fight really hard to try to bring our numbers up and be able to offer some of the things that are offered in other counties that are funded more adequately than El Paso County. So, we're trying really hard. Commissioner Vanderwerf will like this next bullet. In the last year, we audited and reviewed 17 contracts for effectiveness and efficiency. We actually eliminated eight and nine were reduced because either they weren't needed anymore or they were, you know, maybe duplicative of something else that was already being provided or their outcomes weren't good. In a few cases, they weren't consistent with our mission and actually, their outcomes were good and we felt badly about doing that, but we needed to do some reduction to get within our budget because, as I just described, the state budget for El Paso County hasn't been as robust as we wish it would. So, we did some reductions and eliminations and just in the last month, I finished reviewing 395 contracts. I did that with Rachel. We reviewed every single contract in the Department of Human Services. I made recommendations as needed related to all of those contracts. And so, I'm really proud of that work. We've really taken a close look at every single contract to make sure that we're getting what we should be getting in El Paso County. We have expanded audits of community contracts and are implementing a risk-based analysis for ongoing audit frequency. And when I say a risk-based analysis, we're really looking at risk in terms of, first of all, what are our very biggest contracts and doing some targeted auditing of those contracts and reviewing of those contracts, the big dollar amounts. So, that's part of the risk. And then, other parts of the risk are any complaints about a program or something that would make them higher risk. So, we now have developed a policy, a framework for risk-based auditing. And then, over the next few weeks, we'll be developing a tool for risk-based auditing. So, this is something that was in place when I worked at the state and I've seen private industry also do risk-based auditing. And so, it's something that we really wanted to do more of. And if we find that there are problems, it allows the county, county is actually required by Volume 7 rules, if we find problems that we need to recover funds, we actually have to do that and we would do that. Another thing to know is that, you remember our big grant, so I just couldn't help but highlight this again, 830,000 in state and federal grants to implement a program to improve efficiency called HS Connects. And this will help with our medical and food assistance processing. And so, we're really thrilled to get those big grants this year. And finally, we have certainly earned some performance incentive funds from the state for Medicaid or HIPAA from healthcare policy and financing. And we had earned some in child welfare, although they have decided to eliminate those from the allocation and just include those in the base allocation. And finally, this is my last slide. This is our base budget and critical needs. As I said, we don't have critical needs to offer up this year. We'll mostly state and federal funded, but we appreciate your support and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Commissioner Vanderwerf.
Thank you. Really not a question, just on page 20. Kudos for every single line on that chart.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Please relay that to the team, the staff. And you know, it's not just about fiscal responsibility, what those things are talking about, but it's also about improving performance. And you're already doing a great job, but this just improves it more. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate your kind words.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate, you're doing an outstanding job and I was very pleased that you were able to join our team this year. And then, you and Commissioner Waller are, you know, a fantastic tag team. So, thank you for all the work you do.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm really truly honored to be part of the El Paso County team. I love my job and I love this county. Thank you. And I agree, Commissioner Waller is fantastic on the Child Welfare Allocation Committee. I heard that he wanted to sign a lifetime commitment.
I'd be for that. I'd vote for that.
Commissioner Littleton.
So, you know, it's one of those things with CWA, you know, the Child Welfare Allocation Committee, you know, where Denver gets more funding but has a lower population. And it's one of those things, when you run government efficiently like we do here and we're looking at even more efficiencies, when you have greater accountability and you look at how to make sure that people are doing what they say they're going to do so that they're in compliance and serving our citizens in the best possible way, you know, when we're frugal with funds, you know, it looks like we don't need anymore. So, Denver may or may not be doing the strategic measures that we have in making sure and ensuring that we have programs that are being efficient, programs that are being run that are, have great accountability. You know, it's like no good deed goes unpunished, okay? So, I just want to, I want to applaud you guys, you know, and we will continue to stand behind you in any new way that we can to try to allocate some of those funds where they really belong. And that is with great transparency, great accountability, and putting in place measures that are really positive for citizens. We'll be behind you and try to get some of those Denver dollars down here where they belong.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. I appreciate your support.
And thank you guys for what you do. If you'd just tell all of your team, "Thank you," really, from the bottom of our hearts. And we need to get, do we have the December Feed the Children event on our calendars yet or do we know when that's going to be for the Christmas?
The, actually, Mercy Christmas and Feed the Children made a hard decision this year and decided that they can't do it this year.
So, we're not doing it this year?
So, I'm sorry that that wasn't communicated widely. So, I've talked to some of you about it. We're bringing a partner to send our clients to Bob Telamassi and we're also partnering with the Care Portal to bring gifts to our kids in foster care. But it wasn't a decision about anything related to the county or what the county did. They're great partners. They love working with us, but their board actually decided that they want to focus more on some of their other efforts. So, they, I had lunch with them. We were sad to lose them and they were sad to lose us, but they're just focusing in different places. So, it was more of a financial decision.
Okay. Sorry, I just was kind of like looking for the invitations.
I know. I'm sorry. But we will have some other holiday events and we'll be sure to invite you because it'll be great and it'll be fun and we'll be sure that you're included.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, I personally want to thank you for your leadership and your team. It's almost every day I get to see some pretty heartbreaking emails that are of some of the things that is happening in the community that you're dealing with. And your team and your ability to be able to address that and manage that, it's hard work and I just want you to know it's greatly appreciated. So, keep it up.
Thank you so much. Your kind words really do mean a lot to all of us. So, thank you for supporting the Department of Human Services.
Thank you. Okay. I think we're down to our last presentation. No pressure.
Never, Commissioners. I am always so thrilled to be here in front of you. We have, I'm sorry, I did a sincere, I actually meant that sincerely.
Okay. That was not a sincere, like tone of voice.
I'll blame it on my cold. I'm sorry. I am super excited to be here. And so, we have, sorry, there's chitter chatter at the dice. But I am honestly very, very thrilled to be in front of you as always and to be really wrapping up these hearings. These have been great. Of course, before I get into this presentation, I always like to thank our county administrator, Mr. Yankowski, and the department directors and staff, of course, the seller budget team that we have that works so diligently with all the departments and offices, our countywide elected officials who put a lot of time and effort into assisting through this process as well, and then, of course, to you, Commissioner. as well, and then, of course, to you, Commissioners, for hearing all our presentations and asking really great questions and going through this, through this process. Obviously, it's a very collaborative effort, and we're proud of that and the process. So what we have, and this is really wrapping up for the original adopted budget, budget hearings, I have a brief presentation for you, and what we do at this time is I just kind of recap everything. I've tried to highlight, summarize items, and then I end with the financial roadmap, which is effectively being proposed based on all of the deliberations and budget meetings that we have had with the departments and offices. And then you have, you have that roadmap, and then when we get to the December 5 meeting, that roadmap will actually be pulled up on the big screen in spreadsheet format, and from there, you all will provide direction as to how to maneuver. Do we stay within the roadmap? How do we deviate from that? Do we provide funding here instead of there? The department directors, the elected officials, the countywide elected officials will all be here. Staff will be here to ask questions. We will entertain an extensive discussion, and then, of course, and of course, we'll receive direction from you, from the majority of the board, on how to proceed with finalizing the 2018 budget. So with that, again, my presentation's pretty brief, just to recap the process and the critical needs, and then the roadmap. So the process, as you know, we start the internal process, if you will, the in-house process, budget compilation starts in June of 2017 for the 2018 budget. Through several months, we meet with departments and offices, that's both individually and then as groups, to discuss the critical needs and the direction and funds available. Obviously, this year was very unique. That required additional meetings because of what we were faced with giving our Tabor excess. As you know, voter confidence in El Paso County and what we are doing with our financial roadmap and the direction that we're taking here allowed us to proceed with Budget A, which, of course, Budget B going into future years looked very draconian. We are glad to see that we are heading in the direction of Budget A where we can reinvest in our critical needs and our infrastructure. You also know we held four public budget hearings for the 2018 budget, starting in September with the preliminary balanced budget. That's usually a pretty simplified process there. We presented a preliminary balanced budget. This year, you actually had received two, as you know, Budget A and Budget B. And then, once we knew the results of the election, we headed into the last three meetings that we are wrapping up today, with all the critical needs, presentations, hearing from COG, and then myself. The original adopted budget, the presentations from departments and offices, we've tried, we've tried as best we can over the years, and we'll continue, and your feedback is great, especially because we have fresh, new eyes, folks that aren't as familiar with the operations and what makes sense and what's streamlined for the public as well. We try to keep those presentations as streamlined as we can, which is difficult task in and of itself, because obviously, if we have Ms. Crowe talking about Department of Human Services, and Mr. Reed talking about Public Works, and then you have, you know, Mr. Wolken talking about Parks, they're very, very different operations. So as a county, we know we have a vast array of operations. Some of our departments and offices have restricted funds, some of them don't. And so we try, we've tried to streamline and provide comparative information as best we can in that type of format. But you know, those presentations outlined the operations. In many cases, they're mandates. Most of your countywide elected, well, I should say, all of your countywide elected offices do have mandated services that they are required to provide, but through consolidation efforts and through great collaborative efforts throughout, throughout the years or over the years, we have common supportive of those functions and those operations, which occur, of course, in your administration offices. And then they touched on personnel and then budgets, and they provided what they felt was relevant budget information to you during those presentations. As you know, some of those departments and offices do contain restricted funds, and they highlighted some of those, and we'll work harder next year to articulate and segregate those out, if you will, in the presentations. But in the 2018 proposed budget, and this is just to clarify kind of some of the comments I made earlier, where they had changes that they were known, they did outline the 2018 budget, where they had critical needs, they did outline those. And of course, everything is dependent on BOCC direction. So if they did not provide a 2018 budget, it's because they are pending BOCC direction on whether they're going to receive additional funding. So with that, just to kind of recap it all and bring it up into a summary, the next two slides are really a summary for what you have seen over these three budget hearings. There's four items here, and the critical needs that are being requested for 2018, as you know, they are, you heard from all departments and offices, the investment in human capital. They all touched on that. We are a service-based organization. We need to invest in our personnel because that's who we depend on to provide the service and do the jobs and maintain our complacency with our mandated services. Just to give you an idea, to address the remaining pay and equities, we have roughly, and that is to step, the remaining step from minimum to midpoint. Right now, that estimate is about 11.6 million ongoing. We also touched on addressing pay for performance and cost of living, as that is outside of the adjustment from minimum to midpoint. The second item that you heard this morning is, of course, Public Works, the Highway Division, which is the significant investment in road infrastructure. We know that our initial target is to get to 16 million ongoing, and over the next couple of years, as we can reassess that amount, we determine, does that really need to be 25 million? Do we need to do something different in terms of how do we get there more efficiently, much, and address that backlog much more quickly, and what are different ways that we can get there? And then eventually, maybe that ongoing amount is something like 10 million or 12 million. We really don't know yet until we get that ball rolling and we get that inventory asset management system up and running. But we know that's the, that's the second significant item that was brought forward. That was for, that was department-specific. And then, of course, Public Works Facilities. Part of the financial roadmap that we've had on there is always in 2018 was to reinvest in the major maintenance with our public facilities. This was one of our, this was one of our deeper cuts during 2008. This budget was somewhere around 1.2, 1.4 million at that time to invest. Obviously, you know, it's like your vehicle, you want to maintain it, otherwise then the engine blows up and it's much more costly at the end. So major maintenance is really on all our facilities, which Mr. Reed outlined, we have a significant number of facilities. The Strategic Moves Initiative that we did helped us delay this to the 2018 budget year because, of course, when we did the domino impact with the Strategic Moves, we moved into the Citizen Service Center. We were able to repurpose and add on to the Coroner's Office, and we were able to repurpose this building, and all the various facilities that were addressed during that really helped us to kind of push this, push this off to 2018. But we do have slotted for 20, in the 2018 budget for the financial roadmap, an additional of 750,000. I believe another 50 to 100,000 gets us to where we were previously, where we think is a good amount ongoing, but again, we'll be doing more assessment as it relates to our buildings. And now that we have some new facilities, obviously, we don't want, we want to make sure that we invest in them and do major maintenance on them so that we don't have large ticket items pop up in future years. Community Services, invest in the pretrial services program. There was extensive discussion on that today. 470,000 ongoing. That does, excuse me, that does include that position that is being proposed. And so this is really what you're looking at for 2018. That does not mean that's the only critical needs that we have here in El Paso County. Obviously, we still have more, and as we continue to grow and our population continues to engrow, and as, you know, mandates are put down or brought down to us in terms of our services, and as we have optimized our efficiencies as best we can, and we have to maintain with the growth within the county, obviously, we need to also reinvest in some other departments and offices. And so even though you did not hear a lot of critical needs specifically for 2018, there were several departments and offices that did reference them during their budget presentations, and so you will see some of these coming forward for the 2019 budget. Public Works, Highway, obviously, that's to continue to increase that investment in infrastructure, to continue to increase that amount as we move forward into future years to get to the point where we're at that 16 million or we have a different number for what that needs to be. The countywide, continue to invest in human capital. That's something that we've heard continuing on into future years. And what I'm really talking to here is the financial roadmap, 2019 to 2022, and then as we move forward into years beyond that. Statutory pay increases for elected officials, this is something we're mandated to do to stay within the category one pay adjustments. Every time we have, every time there is an adjustment done, and then we have an election, we have to address those, we have to address those accordingly. That is not something that's obviously negotiable. Community Services, Parks, we have slotted in 2019 and future years to reinvest in our forest management, some of our mitigation efforts related to that function. Our Parks Maintenance Positions, they did have, I think, a couple approved a year or so ago, and we believe in 2019 is when they're going to need some reinvestment in that. And then to reinvesting in Parks capital improvements, you'll see those in years out. Obviously, the approval of the Tabor excess, the 2 million from 2015, if I have the year right, 2015, that helped address a lot of the Parks capital backlogs and infrastructure needs that they had. And then, obviously, this most recent election, we have slotted 1.5 million of Parks capital projects to do, to allocate some of those funds based on voter approval, to go into some of those. But the backlog, of course, is greater than those amounts, and so this is really to reinvest for, I think it's three or four years, to capture the rest of that in future years in the financial roadmap. And you'll see all of this when we get to the, to the matrix. But some of the other items that were spoke to, information technology, we have been able to assist them, as you know, through the cost allocation plan to increase their spending authority so that they could start to address the backlog in PCs, software, hardware needs that they have. But we do anticipate in the next couple of years that we will need to start reinvesting in software and hardware and continue to invest in innovative solutions as we move forward as programs and opportunities present themselves as it relates to technology. Public Works Facilities, continue to invest in major maintenance. This is just to increase that 750,000 by a slightly larger amount, and then invest in major maintenance positions at that, at that time, too. That is one of the last pockets of positions that we have from the 2008 budget reductions. The Clerk and Recorder's Office, the next three items, they're in blue, and the reason why is because you heard presentations from them over this last week that they really wanted to invest in some additional positions, but currently, those are what we would refer to as new requests because they aren't built into the original roadmap. So they had articulated that in future years, as things continue, as, you know, the number of transactions for the Clerk and Recorder's Office continue, they anticipate that they will need to invest in motor vehicle positions. The District Attorney's Office spoke to investing in attorneys, investigators, paralegals. As we know, also, there is a plan in X number of years to bring down some additional judges, allocate new judges at the state level. So we know that all of this is on the horizon. And then the Health Department did say that they're not requesting anything for this year, but what they would like to entertain the discussion for future years to reinvest in programs. So these are all items that are not being requested in 2018, but are things that we want to keep on the forefront of our mind because as we move forward, those presentations will be coming, will be coming to you, but they're not critical, immediate, that they have to be addressed in this next budget year. So really, the financial roadmap for 2018 to 2022, sorry, I'm parched.
Take a drink.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a breath, I'm gonna take a drink. I apologize. You know, that Sudafed really kind of dries you out, too. But for the financial roadmap, as you know, this has been a very successful process, a very successful model that we have implemented, which is really the rolling five-year plan. I've said several times at this podium that every six months, this, this six-month, the five-year financial forecast changes significantly because things are always changing. We see changes in activity, the Clerk's Office, obviously, the economic recovery we projected, which, you know, came back much more robust than we anticipated. But the process and the roadmap in and of itself has been very successful in how we bring it forward, and then we adjust it and roll it every, every so many months, and then, of course, you see a new one every, every year. We know the process with the financial roadmap also helps provide a clear and unified direction for the organization. We are no longer just looking at the next year in and of itself without any implication of what, what direction and action taken today will have on future years. We know that that was very problematic in years past with the budget process, and it's always good to be projecting and anticipating as far out as we can. We know it's a proven model and process, and we believe it really demonstrates the effective use of taxpayer dollars. The taxpayers understand exactly where those additional funds and those increases are going and how they're being allocated and reinvested back into, into the service need requirements. And really, the financial roadmap, by being able to project and do this five-year, it really provided us the opportunity to identify our needs going into future years, but also take them to the ballot. Obviously, when we saw the issue with, with the Tabor excess, that was something that we were able to anticipate and then very clearly articulate to the citizens that this is the issue that we are, that we are facing moving forward. And it provides us the opportunity to address the high-impact issues. Based on what we saw with the election results, you'll see this in the roadmap, absolutely, it's going to give us that opportunity. And really, again, I can't stress this enough, somewhat of a new day in El Paso County. The ballot results really affirmed the voter support, their trust and confidence. We believe in what we're doing and how we're articulating and how we are projecting that we are going to expend those funds, and then, of course, staying within those, staying within those commitments. So with that, Commissioners, I had some conversations with a few of you, and one of you in particular brought, brought this kind of model to our attention because, keep in mind, we've been doing this for 17 years, I guess, I don't know if that's the right number of years, 16-plus, says Sheri. They're so exact over there in finance. But anyway, but 16-plus years, we have been, we've been doing this, and we see things a certain way, but it's always good to have citizen input, to have new commissioner input on what makes sense and what we want to be able to articulate. So this is a chart that we, that we developed based on some conversations, and we think it's really, it very clearly illustrates what we are, what we are intending through the financial roadmap, because sometimes when you throw a lot of numbers up there, it's not really clear on what we're, what we're doing. So we took the numbers, our historical numbers and projections, and we took what we actually have built into the financial roadmap, and then we, and then we took, then we took the impacts that we discussed as a result of the ballot, and we dropped this into a cumulative chart. So what this is showing you, Commissioners, is the blue line is the cumulative projected revenue increases that we had built into the original roadmaps. And I didn't put numbers in here because, of course, the numbers vary, as I just stated, you know, every six months, they vary. But the increases that we see here are an average of about 5.6 million each year in revenue. Now, as we look at our sales tax projections, as we look at our, as we look at our, and I say an average because, of course, with the property tax, we have a biannual swing. So that's not just a steady trend line. Obviously, we see a big bump in the, in the assessment years, in the reassessment years, and then the off-years, it's a smaller amount. So an average, what you see here is about a five and a half, I'm sorry, a 5.5 million, average of 5.5 million increase over the prior year in revenues. This is what we have projected in our original financial roadmaps, and it stayed pretty consistent as we've moved forward into the years. And then what you see in the red line is the cumulative impact of the critical needs that we had built into the roadmap. And you can see we, we really addressed And you can see we, we really addressed everything in 2017, and then as we head into 2018, you'll see here that we have a little bit of a variance. And then as we get into this, this is based on, we have, we have, as the variances get a little bit greater, this is as we're addressing the critical needs and the reinvestments that we have brought forward to you and that, the bulk of which were already addressed in the original 2016 roadmap, and then they've just carried forward, and we've had some minor tweaks to that. So to give you an idea, what is really addressed in this is the countywide pay adjustments, the reinvestment in some of the personnel, the reinvestment in the major maintenance programs, the re, the reinvestment in, in some of the parks items that we've, that we have proposed, reinvestment in information technology, all of the critical needs that have already been identified through the years in this process. And you can see in 2021, it stays flat between that and 2022 because as far as our roadmap is concerned, in 2021, this is where we address everything and get back to where we believe we need to be to, to fully reinvest based on everything that, that is being requested through the departments and offices. Obviously, this is several years out, so things will change, so we may see some adjustments. But for example, you know, we don't have any additional projected amounts going in from 2022 over 2021. And so what you see here then with the green line and this green shaded area is the added margin available for infrastructure. So this is a direct impact of what we saw with our approval of our ballot and our reset of our Tabor base. And so what you see here in 2017, obviously, this is where we reset. 2018, even though it's based on 2016 Tabor excess, there's a two-year delay, this, what you see here, this additional represents the 14.5 million and then a little bit extra that we're looking at putting into infrastructure for 2018. Obviously, note, we know that's a large one-time amount. This then represents about 8 million excess, and then it goes to about 8.5 million, then it goes to about 13, 14 million, and then obviously, it continues to grow. And the purpose for this is based on some of the conversations that we've had in the maintaining the voter commitment that, yes, we have our projected revenue, and yes, we are still going to address our critical needs that have been previously identified, but now we have this additional where we can reinvest in county infrastructure and the backlog that we have identified. And that's what this is really articulating. And to Commissioner Vanderwerf's point that he, that he stated earlier, for example, if we were to have a significant reduction in revenue as due to difficult economic times, and let's say this were to go down by 13, 14 million, we could still, we could still take a hiatus or a break from investing in, in infrastructure for a couple of years without having to touch this component down here and do significant layoffs as it relates to operations and personnel needed to provide the services. So this is a new chart. We like it, we're excited about it. And this is kind of a snapshot of what we're looking at. So the next slide, which is really the last of it, is the details, because, of course, the devil's in the details, and it's everything that you just saw in that bar chart, but it is articulated here very specifically. So we know, and this is the spreadsheet we will work from on December 5th, again, five-year projection, lot of numbers, you've all seen this before. But what you see is, starting in 2018, we begin with operational savings of 4.2 million. We know that this amount is a rolling amount, so once you spend it, it's one time, it's gone. The rest of this is ongoing as we go into future years. And as we go into the next year, these items in the prior year will roll off and we'll focus on the next year. You can see the revenue projections that we have in place here, and then the expenditures that are built in. This, of course, is a baseline with the exception of 2020, when we know we will hit that additional pay cycle based on our bi-weekly pay schedule. You can see here, the blue is, these, these four right here are Tabor retention. The two blue are the invest in parks capital of 1.5 and the fire and flood recovery of just over $1 million. Those items, of course, were very specifically articulated through the ballot. You can see all of the orange is invest in the high-impact road infrastructure. You've got your Tabor retention, I-25 gap of 6 million, additional road projects of another 6 million. And then we have, we articulated that in 2017, we, that we increased this amount, it was basically at zero at that point. We added 2.3 million ongoing, so this would be an additional 1 million to get to 3.3 million. We, we left these items in, but we changed them slightly. And how we did that, commissioners, is we tried to keep them consistent. They were, in prior years, they were little all over the place. There were larger adjustments in different years. And so what we did here for, for simplicity's sake is we have each year for the next five years, an adjustment to midpoint, and the percentage that you see here is a percentage that we get to. So the 1.5 million, what that would represent is that based on the salary comparison, based on the comprehensive compensation study, if we were to do the 1.5 million in 2018, we would adjust those specific positions, not an across-the-board, to the departments and offices, but address those specific positions where we are, where, from the, from minimum to midpoint, where nobody then would be less than 86% below midpoint. And then in conjunction with that, there would be the pay-for-performance, cost of living, however you as a board choose to provide direction, how you would like us to proceed with that. But this then 2% would be a 2% applied to the personnel budget. And so that would then go to each department and office, not dependent on the weight of the adjustment from minimum to midpoint, but that would go to each department and office to make those adjustments. And then these two in conjunction, the next year would then, as we were to implement, let's say, the next year's adjustment, would then bring everybody to know less than 91.2% below. So this is, this is the, this is very similar to the original strategy, but again, really kind of streamlines. It keeps it at 1.5 each year, and then, of course, as we increase the budgets, we have to adjust minor amounts going into the, the next year. But that gets us there then effectively in 2021, and then no additional amounts for You can see the statutory pay increases. These don't get implemented till the 2019 budget, but everything in white is from the original roadmap, just so that you know, just so that we're clear. The blue and the orange are new items based on what we are able to do through the, through the Tabor retention. And then the two new additional items that we added were the criminal justice planner and then pre-trial services program and stepping those until we get to the 470 over the next three years. Obviously, you have the opportunity to, to fast-track that and put it all in the first year and to adjust this accordingly. So your two big items that you really see in 2018 are the facilities, major maintenance, reinstatement, reinvestment, if you will, that was always slotted for this year through the roadmap. But then what you see, commissioners, is you have this one time here where you've got 14.5 to invest in infrastructure, and then you have an additional million, so it's 15.5 million. And then that's because you had a significant bump one time. But then that 1 million in 2019 goes to 8 million, goes to 8.5 million, goes to 13.7 million, and at that time, you take, at that point in time, you take the 13.7 plus the 2.3, that's the additional 16 million that we have been gauging. If we deem throughout this timeframe that we need then more to go into the infrastructure, then we can do that. And of course, obviously, in 2022, you know, you're still left with, based on these projections, an excess of 10 million going forward in, in that year on, ongoing. So you would have the ability to do more. But this is, again, keeping us on the same track with the, the compensation that we, comprehensive compensation that we had already, already established, and then keeping these from the original critical needs. You can see, you know, some of this information technology, they were, back when we did this in 2016, they were, they, it was, 2019 was the year that they were slotted to do it. So this is what we have developed as a proposal for the 2018 budget and then for the financial roadmap from 2018 to 2022. The only other things that really come into discussion through this process when we take this spreadsheet to the overhead and, and we start noodling and dropping numbers and then playing, the only other thing that comes into consideration is the fact that we have projected a 4.5% increase in sales tax. We are very open to having that discussion on whether we think that is too conservative, whether we need to increase that, what we need to do, we will have scenarios for you. So if collectively, three of you say, what, what would it, how much additional dollars would it, would it capture us if we built in, you know, 4.6% instead of 4.5% or something along that line? We will have those incremental adjustments, and that is also something that we add in here. That's the only revenue line item that's really negotiable. Everything else is based on analysis. Obviously, the property tax numbers are what they are based on the assessment. I'm gonna take another breath.
No, if we're only having like 13 slides, holy mackerel.
Well, I know you were much more pleased with Sheri when she came forward. She was much happier. So next year, Sheri can do this, but, but it's really because this is our first year as, with, with all of you. It is really, it's, it's really important that we understand all the details and how they fall into this financial roadmap. But this is, this is really what we're looking, looking at. And then the other revenue line items are, you know, your, your fees and, and that type of thing. And again, there's analysis in there. Those really only change unless something significant comes to our attention. So with that, there you have it. Next steps, December 5th, citizen comment, BOCC discussion direction. Again, we will have elected offices, countywide elected officers here and, and department directors and support staff to have, to answer questions and to, to, to participate in that discussion if, if, if needed. And then, and then really the BOCC direction. And how that works is, for example, Commissioner Gonzalez says, I want to put this much into this budget, and I don't see three or two other head nods. It, it doesn't go any further than that. However, if Commissioner Littleton and Glenn say, oh, that's a great idea, yes, let's throw it in, then, then that's, then that's how we proceed, just so that, just so that we know. It does require three of you to provide, the majority to provide direction on a specific item moving forward. And then, and sometimes we'll drop it in just to see what it looks like, and then we'll say, no, no, and take it back out again. And when I say we, that's, that's you all. That's really when it comes up to the dais for you to make the determination. And then based on that direction, a week later, we'll come back with our three resolutions, and this budget will be done.
Okay. Time for questions? You ready? Commissioner Littleton.
Thanks. Just, just one, and just for consideration for my colleagues, again, and we've talked about for years, and we're finally in a position, I think, to be able to do so, and that's an emergency fund for...
Stole your que, you stole your question. I've been asking for this for years.
And you know, and you know what, Commissioner? That's two right there, we just need a third one.
And Commissioner, thank you, because I actually meant to address that and I didn't. I think it was Commissioner Waller's comment that, man, for seven slides or whatever. But let me, I, I, I absolutely should have addressed that. So the, what we have in our budget policy and how we have addressed this in the past and how we anticipate continuing to address this, is what you see here is revenue projections and expenditures, but what you don't see is, for example, the excess. So if we project whatever amount on sales tax and we get an extra 2 million in, in our sales tax revenue, that, based on your policy, that excess 2 million falls into that emergency reserve in a given year. Also, you may have an expenditure budget of 130 million, but what you'll see when we bring the final report is probably only 128 of that, 128 million, or maybe 127 million of that will be expended. That underspending that's not re-appropriated to the next year then falls into that reserve. And so, and I can certainly come back on December 5th with, I had slides on that in, I can't remember what presentation that was, if it was last year's or if I addressed it yet with the preliminary balance budget. But we actually do have a strategy and we have kind of what that has historically trended and what that has historically been. We were on track to do that, and we had built that, and we were building it for the emergencies, but then when we had the Tabor excess, it took all of it and we had to start over again. So the anticipation is still that we will continue to see that through this, and we have, and obviously, if, you know, that is if we have excess revenue in the year.
That's where, Nicola, if I could interrupt, that's, that's where for the last several years, we've been wanting to get to a point where we have a designated line. I think it's important for the citizens to understand that, you know, should we have another fire, another flood, et cetera, we have established that we've got that million dollars minimum in there for any type of those responses that we need to have for emergency responses. So I don't care if it's written in there as, you know, emergency funds, you know, minimum.
Right.
Or, you know, or above, you know?
Right.
A million dollars.
Right.
So that's what I think that we're concerned about.
And what I would recommend, commissioners, is we would do that below the line because I don't want you to bank on that excess revenue and then, and then build in ongoing here.
But it's not excess revenue, and Nicola, this is something that has to be built into the budget regardless of...
Right.
Where we are, and it means if anything else has to move in the line item, it does. But this is something that's, that's ongoing, we always make sure we have that emergency reserve regardless.
Right. And if I can just, if I can just clarify, in 2016, I believe it was, we had this very discussion, I believe it was Commissioner Glenn had us add it as a line item in the roadmap, so it was very clear, or actually, we might not have added it as line item in the roadmap. What we, what we may have done is put it as a line item in the budget itself, instead of keeping it in a reserve, which is like a fun bouncer saving, we actually put it as a line item in the budget. And then it was not, because we have very specific rules, you'll recall, related to that, we do not spend any of that unless we come to you as a board to let you know it's for this emergency purpose. And so we did start that process, we have done that. Unfortunately, the cost of these most recent disasters exceeded, obviously, by a million dollars, what we were able to put in at the time. And why I'm saying put it below the line is because we do not, if it is dependent based on what's currently built into your budget policy, savings here and excess here, if I build that in here, and let's say, instead of building a reserve, it's, it's built in as an ongoing expenditure and that savings does not materialize, then what would happen is it would be built into ongoing instead of a reserve that can build over time. That is why I would recommend treating it as a separate, completely separate item that is still articulated, that is still outlined in the budget, that we still have planned for, that is still very visible and that we build, because obviously, we don't know when the next emergency is going to be. But we, we were very much on track to do that until the, the Tabor excess.
Commissioner Zoll.
Okay, I still want to clarify because you say build. I do not want this, you know, excess, it's not excess, I don't want it to build an emergency fund. I don't want it to build based off, oh, if we go over 4.5% or we underspend. I want it as a, we will put a million dollars or 500, whatever it is, that we choose on the 5th to put a million dollars into that fund this year, not a, it will build because of excesses. However you want to track it, it sounds like a good idea.
Right.
But I want us to be able to put a dollar amount into that this year, regardless of how much that is.
So based on, based on what, what you're stating, Commissioner, that would have to come out of these funds and then something else would need to be adjusted, and we'd have to have three other, or two other commissioners that, that, that support that, that, that proposal. But I will plan on bringing back on the 5th, the, the reserve, the, the reserve information that was brought forward, brought, brought forward previously, so that everybody's clear on kind of what, what that process is and what, what is, what is defined in the budget process and how we have, how we have addressed that in the past. And then if, if this board, the majority of this board has the desire to address that differently, then that's obviously the discussion that, that, that we'll have on the, on, on the 5th. But... But this is what it looks like right now. And are there any other questions?
Commissioner Vanderworth.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So, you know, to that chart on Chart 11, by the way, thanks, great brief, Chart 11, sorry. So actually, kind of continuing on the same discussion topic. I think it is important to have a separate identifiable line. We know that in some cases, we might not be able to put anything into it. We know that maybe in some cases, we might even have to take some money out of it in order to balance the budget. But having a separate line allows us to kind of specifically manage it. And for, for us over here on the board, who are not in the budget lines every single day like you all are, we can at least look at it and see it, right? The other point, and I just did the math, maybe I did the math wrong, but if you take from the first line, invest in parks, Tabor retention, down to the bottom line, community services, it comes to 19.6. If you add that as expenses against the 130, you come to 149, and you have revenue of 145. Not exactly sure how the operational savings lines on the top and the bottom play into the numbers, but what I have is, I don't see the expenses and the revenues matching on this chart. So it doesn't allow me to figure out where we could take the money from, say, for example, right? So if I did the math wrong, my apologies, but, you know, it's what I did on the first shot.
So in 2018, you would take the 4.2, excuse me, beginning operational savings, add the revenue, and then back out these line items to get to the 7,550? Is that what you're stating?
Well, if you take the 130 as a red, go down to the 130 million and 155,000, you add those up, and that comes to about 149. So I think I could see that, where you'd have the 4 million on the top and the 145 as the two revenues, and maybe those match. But then I don't know how the savings of 7.5 at the bottom is still retained.
So then that comes up to, that comes up to the top of 2019 as a one-time.
I see. Well, yeah.
So that, so that's a one-time rolling, and once it's expended, the reason why we've done that is because, the reason why we've done that is because in different years, this amount, the beginning operational savings, has fluctuated. It's sometimes been in a positive, it's sometimes been a negative, if we needed it to replenish cash flow. So if it, if it's in the negative, obviously, we need to utilize the revenue, and it just, per budget statute, it states that you cannot expend any more than your revenue and available fund balance or reserve. And so this provides for, this, this allows you to see a balanced budget, which is allowed for, with, which is in compliance with state statute. So in this case, this is kind of like you have additional savings for going into 2018 of 4.2 million is what this is saying. So this, this roadmap effectively expends it in 2018, and then you can, you can see how.
So that, that operational savings on the top line, that is the unexpended revenues from 2017?
That's correct.
Okay. And the one on the bottom is what you're projecting as unexpended revenues from 18 that rolls into 19?
Yes. If all of the above is done here.
Yeah.
All of this is done, then you would be left with 7,550.
So the way that chart?
What it doesn't, I'm sorry, what it doesn't take into consideration, or what it, what it presumes is that all of the 130 million will be expended, and that we will not bring in a penny over the 145 million. And that's where.
And those are just best guesses, I understand, right?
Right. Now, they're, they're not just best guesses, they are, they are conservative. That's why I bring up the sales tax, because this is, this, this is representative of a 4.5% increase in sales tax. So if you all wanted to entertain going to a larger percentage, then this amount could, could increase. That's why I said that's the one thing that is really kind of negotiable with this, with this process. Everything else, we want to stay away from, because it really kind of is, is what it is.
So it might be worthwhile, if I might add, we know that we don't know for sure exactly where we're going to end up at the end of 17.
That's correct.
So, but it is possible, maybe, to add to the chart, kind of, you know, your educated understanding about what that might be, and that would be kind of a, some phraseology or line item that says possible remaining or additional 2017 revenues. And then maybe a line item that talks about emergency contingency reserves, which is this line item that we were just talking about. And then maybe we, that could, those, we could pull from the possible 2017 and put it into that. And then at the end of 17, we're going to be able to adjudicate the numbers and get to exact, and then we'll just need to have a discussion about what actually goes into that line at that time.
So part of that process, Commissioner, is when we look at the, the emergency reserve, we called it the fire and flood reserve, the emergency reserve, whatever. When we look at that, part of that process is when we close out the books in March-April timeframe, we actually come back and tell you, this is what we projected, and this is where it landed, and this is what goes into that. That's what we have done in the, and I say, we've done this in prior years, but we really only had the opportunity to do it twice before, before this happened. Now, as far as excess for 2017, that is exactly what we are projecting this to be. It is called beginning operational savings, because prior boards said that's what makes sense to them, that's what the citizens understand, that's why we call it beginning operational savings. But it is effectively what we anticipate, excess left over from 2017, through underspending and through what we refer to as unanticipated revenue, which is effectively revenue collections above what we budgeted.
So it might be that, once we get to that adjudicated timeframe, the April timeframe, that is the timeframe within which we could add money to this contingency reserve line, because we will have an understanding about what is left over. And I don't necessarily have a problem about that from a timing point of view, but I do think it is important to have it, that it has its own line, because then we can see it and we can manage it. And when we, when we have our, you know, occasional budget deliberations on the board here, we'll be able to see that line and go, okay, you know what? Last year, we were able to get 800,000 in there. You know what? Maybe we can get another 400,000 in and slowly build it over time or whatever, so, thanks.
And that's what, that's what we did, is the 1.5 million that we had, that we had in there was a restricted line item within the general fund, but it was a specific line item that stated that, and then we, we, you know, showed that to the commissioners every, every month when it was very clear. And then if we needed to expend out of it, now, your budget policy and your statutes say that once it's in budget, then, you know, you, you can expend it as long as you're within your procurement guidelines. But we actually set our own internal, excuse me, our own internal rules with that, in that we didn't spend any of that 1.5 unless we brought it forward. And I'm sure Commissioner Glenn and Commissioner Littleton recall us saying we needed to spend 300,000 of that 1.5 for this item, and we, we brought those forward as we identified those, those projects.
Okay. To, I'll come, I think you at least have three head nods to put the line item in.
Okay.
Just to kind of get things going. I would also recommend preparing to have, take us through the revenue discussions for our sales tax.
Okay.
Because we can't do any of that until we agree on what that is going to be. So kind of go through that process so that we can make a decision on whether or not we want to be conservative or, or go a little bit above that. So before we start plugging numbers in, I'd like a presentation to allow us to kind of agree on that area.
So we'll, yeah, absolutely. We'll bring a presentation forward that addresses the sales tax in more depth and the options associated with that, and just more analysis, so you can kind of see the trending yourself, so you can have a comfort level there. And then also, the, the steps that we have articulated previously as it relates to the emergency reserve, so that that process is clear. And then if you want to deviate from that, that's obviously something that you can do.
Commissioner Littleton.
This just goes to the sales tax. If you could just show, just for the benefit of the new commissioners, you know, the historical, you know, what has the historical sales tax been, what has, what have we approved in the past, just so they kind of have a historical basis on that.
Right. And we had some of that in our preliminary balance budget, so we'll just beef it up.
Okay. Commissioner Gonzalez.
And thank, and so I can better understand the, the pay raise part going into next week, or the 5th. So the, the 2%, so the second line of the two.
This one?
Yes. So that one, everybody would receive a minimum of a 2% raise?
Not, not necessarily. It would be intended as a 2% pay increase to everybody, and that's, that's historically how it's been done, to try to bring everybody forward. But, but with your countywide elected offices, you have budgetary authorization, but you do not have managerial authorization. So let's say we give them 2% of the, of the personnel budget, they may make a determination to weight that differently, and that is within their statutory discretion.
Okay. So every department would receive a 2% increase for pay?
That's correct.
And then, okay, then the line above that, the adjustment to midpoint, the 1.5 million, how is that allocated?
So that would be targeted, so let's say that you were 25% under midpoint, and let's say Commissioner Waller was only 15% below midpoint. You would receive a greater increase in Commissioner Waller to start evening the playing field to get everybody to where nobody was paid less than 86% below, or 86% of, I should say, midpoint.
Okay. And so my question here would be, if we were two different departments, he's at 10%, I'm 30% below, there's five employees like me in this department. There's just one employee like him in that department, but he's got 20 additional people who are at midpoint. Would I receive 90% of that 1.5 million?
So it would be weighted by individual position. So payroll would do it automatically, and yes, we would, every position, every person would receive a different adjustment depending on where they fall within that minimum to midpoint.
So one department could receive a great share of this, depending on the numbers. I have no idea.
That's correct. Based on, based on the inequity versus, yeah, versus somebody, let, again, yeah, if you, if, yep, absolutely. And that's one that we would want to ensure that payroll, that payroll actually does that automatically, so that we stay within, so that we stay within that adjustment to midpoint, so that we don't create further inequities by not staying within that, the compensation plan. And then the 2% is then the discretion. Right, right. Which is why we have them as two separate line items.
Okay. Final two points.
Yes.
Final one on the sales tax. I think it would be good, and it's up to you whether you want to bring, like, the past three years, to be able to say, this is what we projected, and this is how it actually came out, to give a level of confidence on how our, how we're doing.
Right. So, yes, and I will caveat that with, we have, in past years, been burned by being too aggressive in our, in our projections. And so this department, meaning Admin and Financial Services, has always taken the position to be conservative, yet realistic. However, it has come in greater. So you will see variances in there, but that was intentional.
Okay.
And we've spoken to that before.
And that way, we can decide where we want to land on that. And then the final point on Chart 10, you know, it would be nice to actually have another one that shows what would have happened if it didn't pass.
Okay.
Because a lot of people are visual, but I mean, it's, I think it's a good reminder in the fact that this is exactly what happened.
And we kind of toyed with that a little bit. So what you would actually see there is, you know, that green line would go below the red.
Yeah. I'm just saying, you know, for presentations around the community, it's very helpful.
Do you still want it shaded?
You can do it however you want. So, all right.
We'll, we'll play with it.
Any last-minute questions there?
No. Thank you for your time. I know it's not exciting stuff.
All right. We are, okay, I think we're finished with Item 10.
Thank you very much, commissioners.
Item 12.
There is no request for executive session.
Okay. We are adjourned.